Paul Kniffel, Director of Public Works and Utilities. I've got Heather Otterstetter here. She helped prepare the memo, so I'll take the first blush at the response we've provided. So, thank you, Barbara.
I'll pull up the image.
So, the question was with respect to whether the groundwater contamination is affecting existing adjacent properties. I mean, if there's anything else that would provide a limitation, any other environmental concerns that would limit development on the properties?
Yes, so this map is going over some of the existing residential?
Yes.
And just curious, does that impact the health of the existing residential development? Or, and/or does it keep the site from being further built out? I know there have been proposals on the site to finish building the residential.
So, the area that's hatched out in the attachment to the agenda item is the subject area that will have the limitations or the prohibition on withdrawal and use of groundwater. So, that's the, what the ordinance will do is put that prohibition on the area that's hatched. That hatched area includes houses that are already built, and so this will apply to those homes that are already built. It doesn't impact their occupancy or their use as they exist today. It's just that any other, anything that's going to go on those properties would not be able to take out groundwater. I think that answers it.
Does that impact planting?
No, it shouldn't impact planting. I mean, the groundwater table is 20 to 30 feet below the ground.
Oh, okay, that's much further, okay.
That's the shallow groundwater, it's not necessarily the deep aquifers that are 1,000 or more feet underground.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Anything else? I don't have anything. Did you have?
I have City Manager's report for the dais tonight. I could add a clarification around tonight. So, we have a public hearing. The first one up tonight is for the 2025 budget, but for clarification for council and our community with us tonight. That's really the community's opportunity to come and speak to you. This is not the one where we engage, the city council engages with each other and staff around what to do with that information. So, tonight is the night where you hear from the public about their, or the community about their desires for the budget, and then we will take that information and fold that into the material we bring forward to you for next Monday's study session, where we'll actually have a full study session on the budget, and that's where city council engages with each other and us to incorporate this feedback. At the same time, tomorrow, I will also have the responses to you on all of your inquiries and inputs on the budget, and this also builds towards Monday night. Just wanted to put it in perspective for expectation management tonight, that really tonight is for the community to speak to you on that hearing. May I also say, second point of clarification? We did have, well, we have a number of public hearings tonight. We did have one public hearing scheduled that had three items for Uplands Group together, and based on some very good feedback, we've now split that into three separate public hearings, and that will allow members of the community to comment, to receive a presentation on that public hearing, and then provide comment and testimony as part of that public hearing, and so there will be three separated ones. So, there will be, there are more public hearings tonight than you may have thought heading in, but the reasoning was to give the public a full opportunity to comment on each item as it came up.
Thank you, Councilor Ireland.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Ireland.
I'll just give a quick update. I finally hit 100 pounds over the weekend, and so that's very good. And the wind didn't blow me away during its microburst today. It didn't throw me across the patio as I'm trying to get this huge umbrella. I could have been seen going through the city with that umbrella. But, anyway, I am getting ready to start a new adventure. They are going to put me into a trial because of my cancer being genetic, and they have all of the cancer pieces, you know, have been down to 8-0. They started at 883. So, they've got it so low that they believe this trial is a good fit for my three letters in the genetic field that it could attack. And so, tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m., I have surgery to put in a port because a week ago, both arms were tried 10 times each, and I, after an hour, I could not take anymore. And I said, "You're done." "I'm done," and I left the building. So, I'm getting a port, and they can numb it and take all the blood they want after tomorrow. I don't care, but they're never touching my arms again. So, I have that. It will, just in and out, I'll go home. It'll be good, and then I'll see everybody Wednesday. But, so, they're doing that, and then Friday, I'm going down to Sir Cannon Building where they're going to be doing the trial, and it's across from Presbyterian St. Luke's. So, I'll be down there about three hours, going through what the protocols will be and how that's going to work. There'll be 286 of us in 25 cities across the country doing this one, and so I'll get to meet some people here in Denver dealing with the same thing I am. So, that will be sort of nice, having a little group. And then, a week from Thursday, I will actually start, is at least that's the hoping point, if we can get an MRI scheduled. I have a CT PET scan scheduled for next Tuesday, and they just need an MRI. So, if we can get that scheduled between now and Thursday, I will start the medication on Thursday. It's four days on and three days off, where my last one was three weeks on, one week off. So, they keep you there for the first day, a couple of times, just to make sure, monitoring everything. So, I've met the doctors, I've met the nurses, so we're going to move forward. So, that's where we're at with me, and I continue to gain weight. That's the good thing. If I wake up at 2:00 in the morning, I have a bowl of chips. If I wake up at 5:00 in the morning, I might have my lasagna that I had for dinner at 6:00. So, I'm constantly eating whenever I'm up. I'm grateful to eat and hope that, oh, I don't know what Larry will do if I get too big for the chair, but anyway, he teases me, but he's been a great caregiver, so I have no complaints. If there's nothing else, yes?
Are we also going to do reports as well?
You can, if you want to do it here, or sometimes you do it out there. I don't care what you want to do. You want to do it here?
We can, we have a few minutes. So, my report, I went to two galleys, CASA of Adams and Brumfield County, and then Precious Child, and I'm just so glad that we support these organizations. They're doing wonderful things, and I was so happy to be able to hear from both organizations the wonderful things that they're doing. So, they are great. Yeah. Several items. So, my first one was, I heard, I know that Adams 12, I-Star Schools, they are proposing a mill levy override, a bond measure and mill levy override, and I know Thornton ended up having a resolution to support this, so that was kind of on my list of items. I was proposing that maybe we do the same. That's, just throwing that out there for us to consider at the moment, because I heard some feedback around that. And then another item is our Environmental Advisory Board. They received a presentation in July from a city forester who, Brian McCoy, and we, Westminster, was awarded $240,000, which is great, from the U.S. Forest Service, from the Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program, and it goes towards income-based houses in a city that have low tree level canopy overhead. And so, I know that the Environmental Advisory Board is proposing to send us all a letter in support of, you know, taking action on the grant, but also pursuing further measures to reduce the heat island effect in cities, and so they'd like to have support, looking for other ways to get more trees in the city, and so that's really exciting. So, I wanted to make sure that we all had awareness around that before that gets out in short enboxes. And then, real quick on the Dr. Cog Awards Event, that was a fantastic event. It was really informative, and the people there were just, it was such an impressive array of folks that received awards. I can't possibly go over all of it, but I have a lot to learn in that field, and it's really exciting. And so, that was, that was a fantastic event. And of course, CASA for Adams and Brumfield, also an excellent event. It was a beautiful, really well-done evening overall. And so, again, as Councilor Hott said, I am just so grateful that we support work like that. So, that was really great. And then, one last item is that I know we had to cancel my normal Saturday coffee this past Saturday for a city interview of our candidate. I have a conflict this coming Saturday, and so to anyone listening that wants to meet with me, please reach out. I apologize for September. Just get ahold of me, and we will schedule something. If you're looking to book a meeting, we'll make it happen.
Councilor Ireland?
So, I've been kind of under the weather this week, but I did try to attend the Jefferson County Commissioners' meeting at 7:30, their breakfast online, and I'm still having trouble with WebEx. The link they sent me did not work, so they were supposed to reach out to RIT to see what the deal is. I've only been able to attend one meeting, and they couldn't hear me, but I could hear them. And then the rest of them, I reached out to RIT last time and thought it was going to work, but it didn't work. But my church this week is doing service all week, and Saturday started out with a blood drive, and this Friday, they reached out to some of you, you know, Claire, they reached out to, "We're going to make foster care blankets at our church." Did they say at 6:00, I believe?
6:00 p.m. Friday night, thank you for bringing it up. I forgot to bring that up, so yes, that's happening.
So, you're all welcome to come and help if you'd like, and that's all from me. I'm, hopefully I'll feel a little better coming week to do some more of it. Anyway, thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing for me.
I'll just go quickly. So, there was a Dr. Cog work session this past week. They focused on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Update and really just walked through what the new tool that they have regarding, they've pulled together information by kind of large sub-area. There's four sub-areas, where I believe split into two, you know, because, so I, there's more to come on, you know, furthering that information, but I'm looking at planning stuff, and I am sure that they're engaged with this tool, yes. So, it's, it's great that we have it. It's very macro and, you know, it wasn't quite getting to the details, but we would need that.
Oh, and thank you, Claire Carmelia, for attending Dr. Cog next week. I have a work conflict, so I appreciate you doing that. And then attended, spent a lot of time on the budget the past couple of weekends, but the Precious Child event was beautiful, and I learned more about the organization, even though my son volunteers for them, it was actually still eye-opening for me, so.
Thanks for going. I knew I, it was a good decision for me to just lay low. I'd done too much last week, so I hated missing it, and I had my pastor, who did the invocation. He said, "What table are you at?" And I said, "I couldn't go, so I'm home." And so, I hear that one of our Hope House, Anchor House students who has gone through training with Precious Moments and now, or Precious Child, now has a job there and had everybody in tears. So, that's great. That's a great thing that they did. They had enough land to build a structure that has nine apartments, and we take the kids that have fostered out of foster care and help them. They have an apartment. Anything that isn't nailed down, like the kitchen sink and the sink area and kitchen stuff, they take with them when they first move out, so they have belongings with them, and then we replenish for the next person. But it's, it's been great for the church and for the community and for those students, so we have a good time with them. So, I was sorry to miss it, but it was the right choice for me in that time. So, the CASA, that's always a fun thing, and it was trying to rain on us, but didn't succeed, so that's always fun. And FACE, who's one of my favorites, got to perform for us. I did not know they were going to be there, so that was an extra bonus. Jody and I attended the quarterly meeting for the Jepco, and we were virtual because it was a crazy day, and it was the day you were feeding 5,000, and so we did it virtually. And the key points were the affordable housing that's going on that we're looking into because we have not been necessarily included, and we want to know more of what's happening, especially since we have the million dollars with ARPA money that's supposed to be helping with some stuff. And then, the homeless piece of it. So, we also heard from two or three cities who, they know they don't have enough money for infrastructure, they know they need roads, they need the infrastructure, and they need police and fire things. So, they put several years ago, for the first five years, "Here's what we're going to do with the money we get from sales tax." And so, when the people vote on it, they know what they're getting. They build trust that way, so then the next time they have to go to the voters, again, they tell them what exactly they're going to get with that money, it gets voted on. Well, they're up to, the third or fourth time, they're going to the voters. They don't go in big chunks because they're just trying to build trust that here's what you're going to get, here's what this money's going for. And so, they're doing their needs that way, instead of just taking one chunk and doing everything, they're looking at the whole. So, that was interesting and eye-opening, so. There's nothing else?
Oh, I do have one question. You just reminded me of, since we've approved a couple of, well, this one Affordable Housing Project, and we have another one on the agenda tonight, I'm just curious, when we have a chance, to just understand how, or what progress we're making on Prop 123 commitment with those projects, and so just, when we have a chance, or when you've been able to look at it?
Anything else for the good of the order? See you at the dais in 10 minutes.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Is today the ninth? I guess it is. I thought it was the eighth in sight. Sorry. We will start with the Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting agenda first. So we first have the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Westminster Economic Development Meeting of September ninth. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect and while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings, we want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there's an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall doorways be blocked. Roll call, please. Board Member Carmelia.
Present.
Board Member Demott.
Present.
Board Member Azadi.
Here.
Board Member Haath.
Present.
Chairperson McNally.
Here.
Vice Chair Normella.
Here.
And Board Member Ireland. That brings us to consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting. Director Demott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting as presented.
Vice Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public hearing and resolution number two thirty-four. Is there a motion? Well, let's get this on the table and then I'll open the public hearing.
She had her light on first.
Oh. Vice Chair.
I move to adopt. Do I read the whole, this whole thing before we, sorry? Move to adopt resolution number two thirty-four, amending appropriations for the two thousand twenty-four Westminster Economic Development Authority budget, reallocating one million seven hundred and eighty thousand from the capital improvement project, WIDA reserve fund accounting to account to the city's general capital improvements fund via the Westminster Economic Development Authority transfers account. The amendment of the budget will allow the Westminster Economic Development Authority to transfer funds to the city, subject to city council approval. The city will then appropriate these funds to the general capital improvement fund Westminster Urban Renewal Plan ninety-second and Eaton Street Improvements account.
Director Demott.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution two thirty-four, and I will now open the public hearing. And do we have anything from staff?
We have no presentation tonight, but we are here to answer any questions.
And do we have anybody signed up? We do. We have one speaker signed up, Rick Newsom. Okay. Rick Newsom, come on down. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I did have a document, a one pager passed around of what I'm about to read to you for the non-auditory learners in the group. My name is James Eric Newsom, but I prefer to be called Rick. Thank you for allowing me to present to the city council on a matter that's important and probably one of the lighter topics you're going to listen to this evening. It's important to the residents, though, living near the railroad crossing at Wattsworth Boulevard between Ninety-second and Ninety-third Place. I would like to submit to city council petition to stop the train whistle. As residents living near the crossing, the noise caused by the train whistles at all hours of the day and night is negatively impacting our right to quiet enjoyment of our homes, creating an environment that is detrimental to the health and well-being of our children and ourselves. And last but not least, the invasive train whistle has created an undue financial burden by reducing the property values of our homes. I do have a petition. It's signed by thirty-nine registered voters. I'll give it to the city clerk in a moment. I probably could have had many more signatures, but you'd be surprised at how few people open their doors and somebody shows up with a clipboard. I respectfully request that the city council direct the city to include funds for making the crossing, asylum crossing, in this next year's budget. I understand the funding for this expenditure was previously approved by this council. However, at the time, the switch that would have been needed to be updated would have cost additional millions of dollars, and that killed the project. I also understand that since then, the Burlington Railroad has since updated the switch, but the project has not been reconsidered. I recently heard that the city may have received a federal grant to replace railroad crossings with a silent crossing. I'm not certain if that's true or not, but there may be funds available for this project. Finally, I would like to add that while many railroad employees use three short whistle blasts when approaching a crossing, there are always a few jerks who delight in making excessive noise and waking everyone up in the middle of the night. Your approval of this project would be welcomed by the Westminster residents, including my wife, who is tired of being woken up by some of these people. So any questions or comments?
This is a time for you to share with us.
I understand I have three minutes. I think this took two, so I have no more.
You've got thirteen seconds left.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last speaker we had signed up for this item. Thank you. Is there anything from council? Comments?
I would like to know how much more that would be, since we don't know.
Thank you for the question and thank you, Mr. Newsom, for your input into our public hearing tonight. What we'll do is we will include this and address it in our two thousand twenty-five budget package that we get back to you for next Monday night's discussion. And so this will come up, we will respond to Mr. Newsom's request and provide information for city council for next Monday's discussion when you consider the draft budget.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two thirty-four. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia. Yes. Sorry, Board Member Demott.
Yes.
And Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Haath.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally. Oh, yes. Vice Chair Normella.
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland.
No.
The motion passes on a six-one vote. Thank you. I will adjourn the Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting, incorporating the roll call into the city council meeting for September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and consider the minutes of preceding meeting of August twenty-six, two thousand and four. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August twenty-six. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. This can be a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations. Counselor Demott.
Could I invite the folks up for the presentation? I'll go ahead and let you introduce yourself.
I'm Dale Amy. I'm the executive director and co-founder of the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program.
Did you have anything you wanted to share before we do the proclamation?
I did. I had a few statements I'd like to make. Can I grab my notes? And pardon me a little bit because I get very nervous talking to adults. I can talk to a room of three or four thousand kids and do very well. First of all, even before this, thank you to the, to the council and to Mayor McNally for the proclamation and for the numerous proclamations that this city council has, has provided over the years for us. This is a program that started right here in Westminster when we lost our youngest son to suicide in nineteen ninety-four. And what happened following that was a movement, if you will. My wife always explains it like we were kicked out of an airplane, but luckily we had parachutes and it drug us all over the country, which is exactly what happened. We have a phrase now that we use in all of our training, and I should stop for a second to tell you guys, you all have a yellow bag. That's the reason I brought this with me, so I wouldn't forget to say that. You have a yellow bag in front of you that has several items about the foundation, the cards, those cards that are in there, they seem to be the smallest thing in the bag. They're probably the most important because it's a tool that tells people on the front that they can ask for help, no matter what's going on in their life. The back of the card tells you, if somebody ever hands you a card, what to do if they do hand it to you. Stay, listen, get help. And I emphasize these because there are probably over twenty-five million of these cards across the country now that we know of, and people are printing them off our website and that, so we have no idea how many of them are there. But also in the bag is our care box, done by members of our group. One of the groups that's here actually does the care boxes and puts them together. And these are things that we give to families, survivor families, that are resources and items that help them to be able to see what to do, what to go the next step, resources for them in, in the community that they're in, and that type of thing. This is very important to us because this council, I just want to emphasize that back when we first started, that's thirty years ago today, and I have to also say that tonight, today, is the thirtieth anniversary of the day that we lost our son. So it's, it's something that I tell my chapter people, chapter leaders and program site people not to do. You don't go somewhere public on the anniversary date, but we feel strongly enough about this, especially coming here, wanting to thank you, every one of you. I know you weren't on the council at that particular time, and Mayor McNally has been a very strong voice around us for many, many years. And this council took a step and said, we are providing this proclamation, which, by the way, many times a proclamation is a tool that can be used as awareness in a community. It's what we do with it. We let people know that the elected officials in their particular area have said, this is an issue we need to talk to. And one of our goals, and one of the things you have helped us with over the years, is to help stop the stigma. Because thirty years ago, people didn't even want to say the word suicide, let alone do something about it. And we have, you know, it's just, every day, we seem to be doing something different. This evening, we happened to check the emails right here before we started this meeting, and I have an interview that I'm doing tomorrow afternoon from the Brazilian, I don't know what it's called, but it's their television station that's national across the thing, because they want to be able to know what else to do in the next step. The entire state of New Mexico is rolling out Yellow Ribbon to every school across the place. Minnesota is doing the same thing. Kansas has already done the same thing. Many other states are doing it. Many times over the years, it was like a piece here, a school there, a city there. But what you did is you put out to other cities that they could do this. They could be a leader. And this city, this board, has been leaders along with us to be able to get it out there. We are a community-based program. We still work in the local school. Tomorrow night, we'll be at the Board of Education here in Westminster, and, you know, again, thanking them for the work that they're doing with us. But one of, you know, we, we're this community group that says, here, here's how you can help in your neighborhood, that we have an international reach. One of our neatest chapters is the one in Northern Ireland, and it still floors us that we have all these people all over the place, and they're all working to do one thing, connect one person with another person who needs help. So thank you very much for all of your help for all these years.
Thank you for using your story for helping other folks. That's really admirable. I certainly would think that most of us have probably been touched by this in one way or another. So I think that it's really important. I know mental health is something that this city definitely focuses on, on both of our employees and our community, for this and a variety of other reasons. We've seen a huge uptick through COVID, I know, in my time here. So I appreciate the work that you do. So with that, I will read the proclamation. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family in a community can experience, with Colorado being the eighth-leading state for suicide deaths, and whereas suicide is one of the leading causes of death for young people between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four in Colorado and in the United States, claiming over five thousand lives each year, and whereas suicide is one of the leading causes of death for all age groups over the age of twenty-five in Colorado in the United States, claiming over thirty-three thousand lives each a year, and whereas public awareness and education of this terrible problem is key to preventing further suffering and loss of life within families and communities, and whereas the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program is recognized as a symbol for awareness and prevention of suicide by suicide prevention groups, crisis centers, schools, churches, youth centers, hospitals, counselors, teachers, parents, and youth throughout the world, the heart in the center being for survivors of loss. Whereas the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program is recognized as a symbol for awareness and prevention of suicide by suicide prevention group, crisis centers, schools, churches, youth centers, hospitals, counselors, teachers, parents, and youth throughout the world, the heart of the center for being survivors of, of loss. Now whereas I, Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim, September eighth, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Yellow Ribbon Week, Suicide Prevention Week, and call upon the people of Westminster to prevent youth suicide, wear a yellow ribbon, and raise awareness and tolerance around people affected by this tragedy, sign this ninth day, September two thousand twenty-four, Nancy McNally, Mayor of City of Westminster.
The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when the public hearing is called. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we have received three emails and three voicemails by the deadline, which have been transcribed, posted on the online agenda packet, and forwarded directly to city council. We also have many, many public hearings tonight, so let's begin with the first speaker for public comment. The, sorry, the first speaker is Gary Bland.
Good evening.
Welcome.
If you give me a second here, I gotta open up. Should I start here? All right, start the clock. Gary Bland, speaking, or actually, concerns for the residents of Westminster in the future. As you know, I'm a very big tennis advocate. I keep on trying to find a way to get to you guys, and here we go again. I'm gonna sit there and kind of look at, I look at a lot of stuff. I do a lot of research. The vision plan, I'm looking at a lot of things here. Trails, stuff like that, recreation, they're always a high item. So I look at the vision plan. I got all the numbers here. Not gonna go over it. So now we go into the Parks and Recreation's vision plan. Again, if we look at this, parks are of value, trail systems, recreation centers are just a high demand from a lot of people in your surveys that you do online. So then I go to the, now this is the hardest part, is I've gone to the two thousand twenty-two city community survey findings. So I don't know if there's anything more current. I look online, it says it's been updated, August third, I think I've read some stuff. But again, we look at this, and it says trails and, you know, trailways, parks, recreation. I mean, we've got some great facilities out there, but I think we need more because our city keeps on growing. So as we talked about this situation- So as we talked about this situation with tennis, I have a high desire to sit there and entice you to sit there and look at what a lot of people, and we're not just looking at tennis, we're looking at tennis and pickleball combined together. I've mentioned this before, I think there's a facility requirement that I think the city should sit there and look at. We need to find ways to actually produce this product. I've actually been reaching out some city emails to some officials with that interest in mind, and I just want to make sure that you understand that there's outside money there available. I want to make sure that, you know, this isn't just a burden, a cost, not a cost, you know, deficit for the city. There's money out there, such as the USTA. I already know, I've spoken with them, that's one resource to help the city build a tennis center in the city, I don't know where it could be, I think we need to look at those avenues. The Parks and Recs would benefit from this. Again, I've already offered to have a meeting with some of your officials, and I know that it's not a real big item right now, but there's also the Colorado Tennis Association, they were going to come in and actually produce a defined way to build it, where to get money, how to operate it, cost in, cost out. And I only got 20 seconds, I want to thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Patrick Thomas. Welcome.
Thank you. I also sent an email on Friday to Mike in the packets. I'm discussing today an issue that the Jeffco Planning Commission is taking action for that I think dramatically affects the city of Westminster. I have met with the Westminster City Planning both six months ago and last week. They tell me that Jeffco's actions do not are against both the city of Westminster Comprehensive Plan and are against the Jeffco Comprehensive Plan. However, the Jeffco Planning Commission has voted five to two to rezone residential to industrial, not just up to commercial, all the way to industrial. This has to do with an enclave that's a couple acres, it's on the north side of 108th Street, between Old Wadsworth and New Wadsworth, right in the middle of Westminster, surrounding the property. Most people have no idea that's incorporated in Jeffco there. I'm told by the City Planning Commission, there's no place inside the city of Westminster that you could have industrial three-type zoning. And this would be an exception because then obviously Jeffco would do it. However, at the meeting of the Planning Commission, they acknowledged that the city of Westminster had sent their disapproval of this action. However, they made the funny comment about, and I wasn't there, I got this secondhand, but they made a funny comment about how Westminster didn't really care enough, and therefore they were going to proceed with it. They've recommended it to the county commissioners, it'll go final in a week with a vote of three Jeffco County Commissioners. The city planning tells me they're uncomfortable challenging a county, and I should talk to you here, I've never done this before, but that they need the willpower and the direction as staff to go the next step. A few years ago, the landowner changed the usage from rental real estate to landscaping, gravel, trucking, with gasoline storage and filling station. And the other half was junkyard storage and outdoor signage. There's drainage against the property that caused a problem where the residents brought this up to the city of Jeffco, and that's what started this a year and a half ago. And this is the Westminster water drainage that's being affected. Anyway, the rezoning is not compatible with the neighborhood, would last forever, and thereafter endangers the health, safety, and wellness of the nearby residents. It devalues the city property and the landowner's property, debases the good image of the city and the branding of the city that I've seen since moving here in 1981 and all the improvements you've done everywhere else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Adami. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to speak about the same thing Mr. Thomas did. I'm half-owner of an office building at 8687 West 108, that's in Westminster city limits. And next door, I may have, I may have the worst neighbor in all of Westminster. Now luckily, it's not in Westminster, but it's adjacent to it. And as Pat mentioned, I-3 zoning isn't allowed by Westminster, which is good planning by the city because nobody wants a junkyard as a neighbor. But a lot of residents are about to have a junkyard as a neighbor if Jefferson County gets their way. So we are asking that city council, ask city staff to let Jefferson County know that the city opposes this. This is an easy win. No Westminster residents wants to live to I-3, next to I-3 zoning. I've been a real estate agent for 15 years, I've yet to have somebody ask me, Dave, can you help me buy my dream property? I really, really want to live next to a junkyard. But that's what's about to happen. And I have some pictures of what I'm dealing with and what our neighbors are dealing with here. This is zoned residential. These are tires that we can see piled on top of a non-functioning vehicle. This is residential zoning. This land, this owner has had it for about four years and has shown us his true stripes. He's ignored every bit of zoning and said, my rights are more important than the neighbors'. And I just think that's unfair to the Westminster neighbors who have to put up with this. It will devalue their property and our properties in perpetuity. There's no going back. Once that I-3 is stamped on the map, nobody's going to want to live there. And letting Jefferson County do this will be extricating value from the neighbors and placing it into the hands of the neighbor who's breaking all the rules at our expense. By the way, this is some tires, some more tires, they have an affinity for tires. I'm standing on the culvert that leads, that's the water that Pat mentioned. And in my last minute or so, I'd like to show you this picture. These are five 500-gallon diesel tanks that they're filling and using. You can see the stains on the ground. This is completely, there's no permit for this, this is just happening on residential land. Imagine if your next-door neighbor did this. I think we'd all be offended, rightfully so. It's not something that should be allowed. The city of Westminster is in a unique situation to solve this without much effort, simply telling staff, please oppose this, this does not follow any comprehensive plan. In fact, the comprehensive plan states that the large residential lots west of Old Wadsworth should remain so. This bad actor has made it tough for everyone and forced us to do, to stand in front of groups and ask for your help with this. So I appreciate your time on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deborah Segaloff.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Segaloff, and I'm speaking today on behalf of myself as well as PSR Colorado, which is the Colorado Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. First and foremost, we'd like to extend our deepest appreciation for your serious and thoughtful consideration of issues regarding the Rocky Mountain Greenway. As you deliberate this topic, I'd like to reiterate something I brought up at the study session held on July 15, 2024. It's the recommendation published by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services regarding health risks associated with plutonium. Quote, "Breathing plutonium-contaminated air is the most dangerous way to be exposed to plutonium. If you know or suspect that plutonium has been released to the air, you should leave the area immediately," unquote. It's known that high winds frequently prevail over the Rocky Flat Superfund Site and Wildlife Refuge, traveling to the east and southeast. And it's been shown that air collected at Indiana Street during a high-wind event contained plutonium. According to the scientists and health professionals who made the recommendation put forth by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the plutonium contamination of soil on the refuge, the dry conditions of the soil, and the frequent high winds there should translate to no one from the public being allowed on the refuge. While prohibiting recreation on the refuge is beyond your purview, limiting access to the refuge, and preventing the spread of plutonium into your own communities and elsewhere is certainly feasible by withdrawing from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. Please take this into consideration as you further deliberate this topic, and I thank you again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlene Willey. Welcome.
Thank you. You have heard from many concerned residents recently about environmental threats that are within the control of this council. I urge you to take immediate action on two items of paramount importance. One is the withdrawal of your participation in the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. It is especially important to families like mine. Rocky Flat's contamination killed my husband and condemned my daughter to lifelong disabilities. How can you even consider allowing development of an area so contaminated that samples were found nearby after a windstorm? Recent evidence was also found in soils along Indiana Avenue. Jefferson County and developers want to take advantage of the ignorance of a populace that is either too new to the state or too young to remember the profound harm and the thousands-of-year legacy that this contamination leaves. There is simply no other responsible choice for you to make. The second item is that many Westminster residents have warned you about the threat to our water supply from Rocky Mountain Metro Airport, which lies two nautical miles uphill from Stanley Lake. So far, the majority on this council has chosen to ignore repeated warnings. In fact, you rejected even Councilor Hott's suggestion for engagement with Jefferson County on a method of prevention and contamination from this site. It is hard to witness this decision-making. Our warnings were not the first. In 2022, Westminster was notified by the PFAS Project Lab about the levels of PFAS on airport grounds. PFAS is just one of the multiple contaminants from this public facility, but one where recent federal and state legislation mandates much stricter control in water systems. Be prepared to explain your stewardship to Thornton and Northland City Councils. Westminster is responsible for storage of Thornton-owned water supplies that flow into Stanley Lake. Thornton is already dealing with PFAS removal. Invite them to describe how difficult and expensive it is to deal with toxins once supplies are contaminated. A lawsuit filed against a Michigan airport for PFAS contamination showed that the cost of removal was roughly $30,000 per household, or over $9 billion for the 300,000 households dependent on Stanley Lake for water. This seems the only responsible action for this council to take, and it is very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Darrell Eason.
You all know who I am, and Johnny Cash and Jesus Christ Himself has some pretty unique gestures for you. And the following is what I get back from you.
The next speaker is Sherri Griffin.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. My name is Sherri Griffin. I'm here to talk about the proposed bridge across Indiana and how this is not a simple thing as some would have you believe. During the July 15 study session at 3:11:56, Tom Hobie says that the bridge abutment locations are in the right-of-way for the Jefferson Parkway, and they have a very small footprint. On page 48, the artist's rendering of the bridge looks pretty simple. However, there is a bridge at 3201 Industrial Lane in Brumfield constructed for a similar purpose. It spans the railroad tracks and is roughly the same length. It's also constructed of weathering steel and appears to be identical in its design, and it's far from simple. On page 25, the Jefferson Parkway right-of-way is detailed in yellow on a map of the refuge to the west of Indiana. On page 986, a sketch details a site plan of the crossing and the right-of-way in which the western bridge abutment lands in the middle of the 300-foot right-of-way. It also details a right-of-way on the east side of Indiana. The three-mile, 300-foot-wide strip of land to the west of Indiana was part of a land swap between U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Jefferson Parkway Authority, Highway Authority. The piece of land that U.S. Fish and Wildlife acquired in trade is known as Section 16, 617 acres at the southwest corner of the refuge at Highway 93 and Highway 72. To my knowledge, the swap did not include Indiana Street or property to the east of Indiana. Perhaps the eastern right-of-way is for Indiana. Golden, which has long opposed the Parkway, alleged in a lawsuit filed in 2011 that Fish and Wildlife had failed to complete adequate environmental reviews and unlawfully rejected Golden's separate application for the strip of land. Golden wanted to create a bicycle corridor along Indiana. That suit was dismissed in 2012. Since Brumfield withdrew, and Golden has opposed it from the beginning, it would seem that the Jefferson Parkway will never be constructed. But apparently, Jefferson County and Nevada have not given up. In 2022, they filed a lawsuit against Brumfield, wanting them to convey the land and pay. The case was dismissed in December 2023, not even a year ago, and in a joint statement to Colorado Newsline, they said the judge's decision is not the end of the issue. So I've included the map of the proposed construction bid plan So I've included the map of the proposed construction bid plans for the Jefferson Parkway detailing the area slated for the bridge installation. The question is, what will happen to the bridge if the Parkway is ultimately built? Will it be replaced? Is the intent to add a future section? Inquiring minds want to know. Thank you so much for all of the time. You guys have all spent deliberating on this issue. It's so important.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Allred. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good to see everyone again. Hi, my name is Chris Allred and commenting for Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. Just returning to follow up on the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And I would like to thank members of Westminster City Council for your continued attention and your good work on reviewing and studying this issue. And I will be briefed tonight. I've spoken a few times before. Just here to ask again to please withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And this would be a great service to public health. It's a chance to do the right thing and set a new precedent. This is a long-term decision. This is going to be something that helps the community in the long term. It will help to take the burden off of activists and community members who continue to fight for this. But we need government precedent to set the real standard for how we address rocky flats and public health issues. So this is, we're counting on you to do the right thing. And we need to let the Federal Highway Administration know that they can stop construction on the Indiana Street Overpass Bridge that they're working on somewhere off-site. And Jefferson County is undergoing budget cuts. I'm not convinced that they'll be able to build this overpass if Westminster opposes it. I think that was really valuable information from the previous speaker to hear more about the Jefferson Parkway and those other connections. That's a related precedent. This is all related. It all has to do with development of contaminated land at rocky flats. So set the precedent in the right direction, please. We can't keep fighting this. It gets, it gets tiring for community members to have to keep fighting the same battles over and over again. So I hope that the Jefferson Parkway really does end, because it's a very poor idea, along with the Rocky Mountain Greenway. I've just handed out a paper with many different citations for you. It's a concise overview of scientific studies talking about the risk from plutonium in the environment, just in case, an extra point of reference. And I'd like to end on that there are many people in the community who suffer from health impacts from rocky flats. And I would like to commend the people who have had the courage to speak here and share their stories when they've been impacted, because that is a very difficult thing to do. A lot of people will remain private in the pain that they are experiencing. And it is not easy to go before government and hold your government accountable to being poisoned. So thank you to everyone who has had the courage to speak out, and please make this decision on their behalf. Make this decision on the most, on behalf of the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Madison Cartaya. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Madison Cartaya. I am a student at Naropa University and a deeply concerned Colorado native. I am here echoing the sentiments of others who have spoken before me, urging the commissioners to withdraw their participation in the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. I arrive here in collaboration with Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center and as a leader of a local mutual aid group called Unity Collective, but I do not speak on behalf of these entities, simply as a representative of my fellow humans. I'm just one person, and one person can't save the world. But one person can make a difference in their local communities and can organize at smaller levels to make waves that hopefully expand nationally. So that is why I'm here today, speaking to you all. That's why I went to the last Boulder County City Council meeting, in which I told them about my skepticism upon learning about rocky flats, trying not to get swept up in spirals of doom and conspiracy. I told them how over the past six months, I have heard expert after expert tell me story after story, corroborating the claim that Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, formerly known as Rocky Flats, is not safe. I told them how I have cried for the animals in the refuge. I have cried for the dogs and owners in Westminster Dog Park Downwind that don't know that the land their dogs are sniffing is contaminated. I have cried for the workers and people who have lived near the site for decades that now face a myriad of health issues. I told them I don't want to cry for any more victims of this horribly mishandled war relic. Twenty days ago, I received their response, that they would not be withdrawing from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. Twenty days ago, I broke down sobbing in my kitchen, screaming in hysterics to my partner, "They are killing people in 20 days." Construction on the Boulder Overpass was set to start today, September 9. Today, September 9, they have put profit over human lives, and I am angry, disgusted, astonished, and mostly so, so sad. I'm not an expert, and I hope there's more to this than I have learned over the past year. I believe in non-duality. I understand there are complexities I could never understand in your roles. I believe humanity is ultimately good, and I want to believe that Boulder County was acting in the best interest of its people, though everything in my gut tells me otherwise. I want to believe that you all will act in the best interest of your constituents, and I'm open to hearing the ways you intend to do so. If you continue with this project, I hope to hear about how you plan to inform the community of the risks of being on that trail. I hope to hear how you plan to provide safety equipment for people in the vicinity of the construction that will be disturbing the contaminated soil. I hope to hear how you will aid families who suffer the health consequences of plutonium exposure to afford cancer treatment 10 years from now. But really, I just hope to hear that you care about your constituents and that the concerns brought to light today and for months prior have been taken-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Appreciate your time to allow me to come forward. I'm concerned for the residents of the north metro area, particularly in the area of 88th and Federal vicinity. There's a map being passed out. I've got it highlighted in this area that I'm going to be speaking about here. That's 88th East of Federal, going towards Zuni Street. There's an old mobile home park in there that was created in 1970. We, I looked that up. That easement, there's a 50-foot right-of-way there that for 88th to go through to connect to Zuni. Normally, I've been in construction since I was two years old, because my folks, my grandfather, did all the brickwork on all these Shawite homes around here. So I'm proud to be a member of the family that brought some quality to Westminster and for people's lifestyles. The city has let the developer off of not connecting 88th to Zuni. Normally, in construction and development, they take and have the developer finish projects like that. So the city's owned that 50-foot right-of-way. There's water, sewer, gas, all through there. So the city's owned that right-of-way for, since 1970. I know that there's a transportation, transportation mobility plan that could be used now that you're, now that the city's let the developer off on the hook on. There's also a capital improvement project that the city could use to develop that. They're over there moving dirt right now, started today. If the city would have the developer take that dirt down there, because they got to put it somewhere, it'd probably save the city somewhere around $100,000. You wouldn't have to put the asphalt down, but you could at least start getting the dirt over there. If that was cut through there from Federal to Zuni, that would cut down two minutes' travel time for emergency vehicles, whether it be fire or police. That mobile home park only has one entryway going into it. And if it was designed today, it would have to have two. And it could be put on that northeast corner of 88th and Zuni. I know this is going to have to go through Public Works. There's also other items that could be used for this, but it's a safety factor. So I propose that the 88th be connected to Zuni for public safety and help reduce the traffic that's going to be in this area in the near future and on into hundreds of years down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amira Assad-Lucas. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Amira Assad-Lucas, and I am the Vice President of Adams 12 Board of Education. And I am here to share about two measures that we voted on August 28 to pass unanimously as a board to be placed onto the ballot for November for voters to take up. So these measures will expand many great things that we're already doing in Adams 12, but increase different programming, safety, security, a variety of things. One of the biggest, one of the biggest programmings that it will increase is our CTE programming in the district. And so if you guys are aware, we have a very robust college and technical education program. We have two campuses. What we want to do is we want to increase programming, introduce agriculture, aviation, cosmetology, and barbership, and then also eliminate a wait, or waitlist of students for CTE, so we can ensure more students can get into programming. We also want to introduce CTE programming into our middle schools, so our middle school kiddos can have access and explore. And by the time they get to high school, they know what they want to do. Another really exciting thing, this is close to my heart, is rebuilding Thorin High School and tearing it down. It's our oldest high school, well, one of them, Northland's, one of our older ones, too. But the structure of Thorin High is very questionable. We found out a couple of years ago that if a strong windstorm comes through, we'd have to close the school down for safety of the kids. So we have plans to rebuild without disrupting our students going to school there. So those are the big things. I mean, there's so many more things we want to, we plan on doing. Increasing enrichment programs at elementary schools. Like I said, security and safety measures. So, yeah. We, if you have any further questions or want more information, please reach out to any of us, board members or Superintendent Chris Kudowsky, and we would be more than happy to share more information. But we're just asking for the city to help support us moving forward to pass these measures and do wonderful things for kids. So thank you all for your time tonight. Appreciate everything you do, and have a great evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jamie Chavez. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and city staff. My name is Jamie Chavez. I'm the President and CEO of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the business community in support of appointing Jody Andrews, sorry, as the Westminster's permanent city manager. Over the course of Jody's time with the city of Westminster, he has demonstrated exceptional leadership, particularly in his support of small businesses and economic development initiatives. His approach to collaboration and willingness to engage with the chamber has made him an invaluable partner in our efforts to foster a thriving local business community. Jody has prioritized the needs of small businesses, recognizing their crucial role in the overall vitality of Westminster's economy and has actively contributed to a climate where businesses feel heard and valued. From our perspective at the chamber, Jody's openness and accessibility have been key in strengthening the relationship between the city and our business community. He understands the importance of partnership and collaboration in creating sustainable and prosperous future for Westminster. On behalf of the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, I support Jody Andrews' appointment as permanent city manager. We believe his continued leadership will greatly benefit not only the business community, but the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Giselle Hersfeld. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Westminster City Council and members of the Westminster community. My name is Giselle Hersfeld, and I am here today on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center. I'm here once again to remind all the good people here today that the land which holds the remains of the former Rocky Flats plutonium pit plant is still an EPA Superfund Site and that the land surrounding it is still contaminated with plutonium, uranium, americium, beryllium, radioactive lead, neptunium, and PFAS, among many other dangerous contaminants. These toxic substances are known to cause many rare forms of cancer, immune deficiencies, and reproductive harm, among other things. And all it takes is one radioactive particle getting lodged in the wrong place to potentially change the course of a person's life or their children's lives forever. I'm here to remind the council that the standards currently put in place by the Department of Energy to measure the risk levels of the contamination at Rocky Flats are not designed to be protective of public health, but of the status quo. Hiding behind fancy, complex models and equations is ultimately an attempt to obscure the real dangers of plutonium exposure. The danger does not come from your exposure to small amounts of alpha radiation as you walk by the tiny particles of plutonium scattered across the ground. The danger comes when you kick up the dust and inhale one or multiple particles of plutonium, which then become embedded in your lung tissue, constantly bombarding surrounding cells with radiation, which over time can lead to the development of a tumor. We don't need fancy models to understand that this is potentially very bad. The standards put in place by the department responsible for the contamination to begin with only serve to sanitize and conceal the risks of plutonium exposure, to normalize exposure, in order to normalize further development on the site. Please do not help to normalize development on this site. If anything, the site needs a monument capable of warning inhabitants of this land for the next 25,000 years that this land is radioactive and dangerous. And this is basically the exact opposite of a bike path. I am here, once again, to request that the Westminster City Council stand on the correct side of history and do what councils before you failed to do. Protect public health and safety. Take seriously the concerns of your community and withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Project. Everyone who grew up in this area, surrounding Rocky Flats during its operation, has a personal story of someone or multiple people they know about dying of cancer. Just because the plant stopped producing plutonium pits does not mean that the land is safe for unlimited and unrestricted use. What the public needs is more education about the site, not more access to the site. Before you are council members and government officials, you are people in this community who care about your families and want what is best for your neighbors. At least, I certainly hope and believe this is why you chose to run for this office. I am grateful to this council for the many hours you have spent deliberating this issue, and I am grateful to you for considering withdrawing from this project. And as you continue to deliberate and discuss your participation in this project, I want you to ask yourself, "Am I making the decision that is politically convenient and expedient? Or am I making the decision that is best for my neighbors and my family?" Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Westminster. I'm Tom Lambo. Really glad to be here. Today is September 9, 2024. It was on April 30 of 1789 in New York City that George Washington placed his left hand on the Bible and raised his right hand, swore an oath, and became the first president of these United States. The Bible was open to Genesis 49. In that chapter, the covenant between God, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob is transferred to the next generation. After the swear, the ceremony of swearing in a president, President, Vice President, and Congressman walked to St. Paul's Chapel and were engaged in worship and prayer. There, President Washington made a covenant between our nation and God, stating that- our nation and God, stating that God, he is our God and we are his people. And that covenant remains today. The chapel remains as well. It's less than 100 yards from World Trade Center. And because New York City was where that covenant was made between our nation and God, New York City is a spiritual battlefield. So here, I'm here tonight to pray for the city of Westminster. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father in Jesus Christ's precious name, we invite you here to Westminster to be our God and we will be your people. You are a covenant God. In Psalm 8934 it states, "My covenant will I not break, nor alter that thing that has gone out of my mouth." You cannot break your word. We will transgress against you and you will still honor your end of the agreement. You are a patient God. You are far above our understanding. You see our potential, not the muck we are standing in. Father, I want to lift up to you all members of Westminster community who are feeling uneasy about the times we are in and the election in front of us. We don't deal with uncertainty well. In Philippians 4, 6 through 7, you state, "Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition with thanksgiving, present your request to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus." Help us to trust in your words. Show us how to release situations that cause us anxiety and not desire to take them back. You understand us and you know that it's not easy for us. It is not our nature, so be patient with us and grant us your peace. In your precious name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Hi, I got some handouts before we start. You ready? I play a little Aaron Brockovich this evening. If anybody would like a little sample, take a little drink of what Uplands keeps telling me is organic. You want a drink? Anyone? I've got two clean glasses here. Of course, organic. Horse shit's organic too, but you don't want that in front of your house. This is all down Lowell. It starts at 8541 Lowell, continues all the way down to Shaw Boulevard, down Shaw Boulevard, through the park, all the way, eventually ending up in Little Dry Creek. So I think we need to do something about this. This all comes from the Uplands Development. As you can see, there's a city code, 8-4-6 subsection C relating to this matter. Needs to be addressed and promptly because this is a toxic substance. They close lakes when there's algae blooms on them because they're toxic. So until such time is, the CDPHE tells me this is not toxic, we're considering it toxic and it's a hazard in our neighborhood that needs to be cleaned up and addressed and stop, stop happening. Again, 8541 Lowell Boulevard, park across the street, walk over and look at it, smell it, see it. This came from there this afternoon. You wouldn't want this in front of your house. It doesn't happen at Walnut Creek where they just got done building. It doesn't happen at downtown Westminster. Why is it permitted to go on on the Uplands property? That I ask. Again, I ask. I'd like somebody to get back with me on that, please, instead of being told, oh, it's organic. It's not. Next, let's talk about, I believe it's item 11C, this cute little attachment that's part of it, page 1, excuse me, 1110 of your packet, showing the contaminated area, part of it being the property that was given to the city as PLD by Uplands. I brought this before, you people before, I brought it before the planning commission before, how polluted this ground is. And coincidentally, this little area that's not included, that's Adams County. That's where the school is. This ground is contaminated. They're asking for you to overlook that and approve building on these properties, not the park, but over there behind Davy's Locker and the Hills Market. That ground is polluted from the chemicals from a dry cleaner years ago that was never cleaned up, never remediated. I don't care what they say, it's polluted ground, just like this PLD that they gave us. The water just didn't stop here at the end of the PLD. It's continued all the way down Lowell and there's never been any testing to confirm that. They did three small test holes up at 88th and Lowell, and I have the two EPA reports from that, but there's been no further testing coming down Lowell. In fact, this here could be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kira Alexander. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Kyle Alexander. I'm requesting the immediate withdrawal from the Rocky Mountain Greenway Bridge. I think it's incredibly reckless and dangerous if you guys proceed with this. I mean, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gregory Alexander. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I'll make this really quick. I'm a longtime resident of the Westbrook subdivision, lived there for over 20 years, raising my fourth kid there, actually my nieces, and just wanted to come out and say that I request you, I strongly request you withdraw from the Rocky Mountain Greenway project. Being directly downwind from what's going, what's happening there, after seeing all the evidence that's been presented to all of you, hearing all the expert testimony, it's just time for the project to be stopped from this end. Obviously, on the bolder side, that's happened. They've ignored the warnings, they've ignored the experts, they've ignored the danger. So I'm just coming out tonight, my first city council meeting in attendance in person, to request that you withdraw from the project.
Thank you, thank you. And that's our last speaker for public comment. That brings us to city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brief report this evening. If I could have the next slide, please. By way of update, this is, this is an important and fun event coming. The city's hosting Jazz Under the Stars event in the space on 73rd and Lowell. That's on Friday, September 20th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And Mayor, this is the first event at the, the community event space at that location. And I know the community is very excited about this, so tickets are available and you can get it by accessing the city website. There's a code to scan or you can contact directly and get a, go ahead and get a ticket. Famil Restaurant from downtown Westminster will be providing food and cocktails, mocktails, and Diamond Empire Band will be providing a seven-piece jazz band and swing dance instructors. So encourage everybody to join the local community and celebrate the opening of that event space at 73rd and Lowell. Next slide, please. Thought it would be important tonight to touch on where we are in the preparation of 2025 budget for the city of Westminster. You'll see two checkmarks on the schedule. The first met, milestone met was September 5th, and that's where city council members put in all of their questions and requests for input on the city budget. So those have now been compiled by staff. September 9th, which is this evening, there is a little bit later this evening, a public hearing on the draft 2025 budget, and this is the opportunity for the community to provide their input and comments to you directly, Mayor and City Council. You'll be in listening mode tonight because on next Monday is when we have our study session to go through in great detail where city council would like to go with the budget, and that will be incorporating what they hear, what you hear tonight from our community and also the responses to what you've raised as questions and input, which we'll have all that for you tomorrow. So we'll build this package of input for you and we'll have that session on September 16th, which is next Monday night. And then on the 23rd, the proposed budget amendments, if there are any, will be sent back to you. So that will be a follow-up to the direction that we receive on the 16th, and that will progress us towards the first reading of 2025 budget on October 14th to be followed and meet the statutory requirement to have the second reading for our budget adoption on October 28th. So I just wanted, I thought it would be helpful for, for city council and the community to understand where we are in the current process and how much room is left, which is quite a bit for input and adjustment of that budget to meet everybody's needs. Next slide, please. So things to know, this is a very active week for the city. Tonight, tomorrow night's meeting of the planning commission has been canceled, so that's first and foremost, that will not be happening. There are a few events happening on Wednesday night this week. The Stratford Park Expansion Open House is scheduled at College Hill Library and that will be from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. That's the same evening as the candidate for city manager, public or community input session, which is Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There's not a full overlap there, so if people are interested in attending both of those events, it is possible. So that's why we flagged the time for those two being different. There's also a youth advisory panel meeting the same night, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30. Unfortunately, that's a complete overlap. And we also have Parks, Recreation Libraries and Open Space Advisory Board meeting coming up the following night, Thursday. Movie in the Park is Friday night, September 13th, and that's 7 o'clock at McFaul. Parks are right adjacent here to City Hall. And then, as I've highlighted, the city council study session will be happening on the following Monday, September 16th, right here in council chambers at 6:30. And I do want to note, this is important, that the inclusivity board meeting that had been scheduled for this week has been moved to September 18th to make room for some of this action this week. Next slide, please. Coming at next week's agenda, I've talked about, we've kept the meeting pretty open so that it can be focused on that budget discussion that I talked about just a little bit ago. We do have a concept plan review process scheduled for you, and that's for Mandalay's Garden Track 10, proposed QuickTrip gas station. So that's coming forward next Monday. And then also, we'll be presenting to you an update on the Federal Boulevard Bus Rapid Transit Project, and most of the evening dedicated, of course, to the 2025 budget review with you. Next slide, please. That's all I have tonight. I know we have a full agenda and multiple public hearings, and so as always, you can get ahold of me directly at the city manager's office at 658-2003 or any one of our four social media platforms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager? That brings us to our city council comments, and I would first like to have council talk about our Saturday together with our candidate and see if you are ready to move to the, the next piece that we have. The next piece is designating our sole finalists as sole finalist so that a clock starts running. We have to, by state law, leave it open for 14 days, and so we would like to keep that clock running so we can have as seamless as possible process keep moving forward. So Councilor Zadi, would you like to start us off?
With the motion or?
No, just to share your feelings of how Saturday went.
Saturday was a fantastic experience. I think we all asked very detailed, thorough questions, and our candidate, Mr. Andrews, did a great job with answering them and I'm just really positive and hopeful for the future.
Councilor Ireland?
I ditto what Councilor Zadi says. I feel like I'm really excited about our new city camp manager candidate. He, I'm especially happy that he lives in the city because the last two, their primary residence was not the city. And I feel like employees that live in the city share what the rest of us share as far as taxes and fees and other things. So I appreciate that he's from the city. He cares about our city because he lives here and he's invested in it, and I appreciate that about him.
Councilor Hart?
Yes, I am definitely in favor of naming Mr. Andrews as our finalist. Talking to him on Saturday, I'm also feeling very hopeful for the, the future of our city. I appreciate how much he listens to those of us on council, but also our residents. And I just, I thought he did a really good job answering all of our questions and, and he's, he's more than qualified and I think that we are, I think that we are going to do well under your leadership. So thank you.
Councilor Carmelia?
Thank you so much. I just want to say I've already been very impressed with Mr. Andrews' abilities in this role. We've seen him perform in this space before as interim and acting city manager, but after that interview Saturday morning, I'm just even more fully impressed with his background and experience. And if you haven't had a chance to take a look at his resume, I highly recommend you go on to our city page and look at that. It's, we are very fortunate to have Mr. Andrews here already with us. So, and I also want to say that his social, emotional, technical and stakeholder skills are incomparable. And so I have a lot to learn from Mr. Andrews, and I'm grateful to do so and to push him forward into this process.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Similarly, I felt that our conversation with Mr. Andrews on Saturday was incredibly helpful. It demonstrated probably needlessly that he has a ton of experience that will help guide the city forward, not only within Westminster, but externally with other communities and building community. He has a deep understanding of Public Works and civil engineering and the things that are challenging for us as a community in terms of our infrastructure and our long-term resilience. And he's actually brought an ethos to the city for sustainability and resilience that have permeated the work that we do and the facilities that we build. I think that is key, again, for thinking about our community, not just for the year ahead, but for the hundred years ahead. And so I heartily endorse him as a finalist.
For me, worked with you before and still, that interview, you have been under three other city managers here in the city, and what you have taken away from, oh, we're having audio issues. We'll take a break. Thank you. Sorry to the audience that's been listening. We felt our comments around the next city manager were important for you to hear, so we hope it's recording now. But Jody, you have such a presence about you with whoever you have been under, that you see things that you sense, you know, you can pinpoint what isn't happening or what should happen, and just the strength of what you shared with us in our interview just blew me away. So you get it. You know the thing So, you get it, you know the things that we all need to work on, and you're ready to jump in and help us with that to become a good team, and I can't wait. And so I wholeheartedly support you as our sole finalist. Councilor DeMare?
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of getting to work with you, I think concurrently the longest. I don't know if overall the longest. I know variety of us have worked with you in different capacities, but the one thing that I do know is you're always up to the challenge, and you do it with a smile on your face, and this organization loves you as well as obviously the community does. And those are two really important things when you're going to lead an organization that serves a community. I know that you've stepped up to be the interim twice, and I've heard the organization sigh with relief, because no matter what the change is, change is always hard, and it's nice to know that you have the respect of the people who work here, and that's very important, I think, to me and I think to this council. So, very, always impressed with your growth that I've even seen in my time here. So, very pleased to be able to name you as the finalist, and since I'm the last one, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to designate Jody Andrews as the sole finalist for city manager position.
Mayor Protim?
Second.
Spin moved in second to designate Jody Andrews as the sole finalist for the city manager job, and I'm told we can just do a voice vote? So if there's nothing else, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Onto the next thing. So we hope that people will come and meet and greet, ask you questions on Wednesday, and it will all be good. Okay, so now, does Council have any other comments for tonight? Councilor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all the various folks tonight, the residents who came out to speak and continue to advocate for the environmental, the public safety, the health, safety of our community, you know, whether it's airport accountability or our moral responsibility to withdraw from the Greenway Trail. I wanted to just thank you all for coming and continuing to advocate for that. I had a question, City Manager, for, related to the one resident who brought up the rezoning issue with Jeffco. Do you, can you give us more details as to when that happened and if that's all true?
Counselor, I don't have the staff here this evening to respond to that. What I can commit to is having them look into the matter and then preparing something that we can send to all of City Council as a public record in terms of what the status of that Jefferson County approval is, and then we will advise accordingly. If we need to bring something back to our City Council on that matter, then we'll do that, but we'll start with finding out where they are in the county on that land use matter, and then we'll get that information to you as a starting point.
Thank you for that. And I'm excited about the CTE programming that we heard from Board Member Assad Lucas Adams 12, and for all the folks who come out to my office hours at 4:30 on Mondays. Today was quite interesting. I learned a lot about the water bill assistance program and the needs there, so I'm looking forward to discussing all of my various research and conversations on this and ideas with Council on Monday when we talk about our budget, because I think the water bill assistance program is something that we should definitely be investing a lot more in. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilor Ireland?
Again, thank you all for coming out and speaking on different subjects. I am especially concerned about Mr. Palmer bringing out algae bloom, and those photos there were pretty shocking. I would like the city to follow up if that is a health concern. It seems to be a nuisance, for sure, and it's going into some of our waterways, and I don't know why we aren't on top of it, and this developer's been allowed to continue to let this go. I think this is shocking that this is going on, and also the part about Jefferson County, thanks for falling out about that, and them storing oil, gas, and whatever on the property, and tires. That is absolutely uncalled for next to a neighborhood. And I appreciate all those that talked about the Greenway path, the airport, and the train downtown. I'd like to know more about that and what it costs to change that, to make it quieter. Anyway, thank you.
Councilor Carmelia?
Thank you. Touching on some similar issues here, to the individual who brought up tennis, I just want to say to Gary, that's right, thank you. I think that you have some support, and I think that we're doing what we can. So just know that we're doing everything we can around tennis and pickleball, which we did successfully open courts for pickleball recently, but just know we're doing what we can there, and so hopefully we can make progress. And then that, again, on the rezoning to industrial, I definitely have questions around that, so I know that you're following up with information. Depending on what we get back, it sounds like we need to get that rather urgently. It sounds like they might be making a motion soon. I absolutely support if we want to send a letter or whatever it is that we want to do. I think a letter's probably a good idea if we can get us all on board, even if it happens to be during the week and you have to reach out for us, to us for support. I think we should make it happen. Probably end up calling them myself, but anyway, that's, nobody wants to see that. And then around the Greenway Trail, I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who came out to speak on that. I mean, this is an extremely pressing issue, and the fact of the matter is, we know, right? We know the risk is high, we know plutonium is present, we know this is a high windswept area, and so really, at the moment, we just face what it is that we do with the situation now, right? A lot of these decisions have already been made with or without our involvement, and so it is up to us to figure out, how do we move forward through this, right? And so thank you for continuing to lay on the pressure, because we have to be responsible for our public health, for everyone's health and safety. And then, thank you to Charlene, bringing up the RMMA water issue again. I just want to say to Charlene, I know that I owe you a phone call back for several weeks now, and so thank you for keeping on the pressure. I promise to get back to you as soon as I can. But also, we should all be concerned about our health and safety around that. That issue keeps coming around about whether, you know, the construction could affect the water in Westminster, and so I'm trying to figure out what my ask is. I feel like we followed up on this before, but yet I also feel like I don't have very clear answers, and so I think it all comes back around to meeting with the RMMA Director is likely where it comes back to, and I think that we have that planned, and so maybe you can just remind us where, when that is.
Thank you, Councilor Carmelia, for the opportunity to update City Council and the community on this. I am in direct consultation and meetings with the county manager, Mr. Kirby, as well as our Public Works Utilities Director is contacting and meeting directly with the airport manager. And what we're doing is we're looking into and investigating these concerns in collaboration with the county, so they have the most information already at hand, so we're gathering that, and we will be reporting back to you as soon as we practically can. It is a series of meetings, but we are investigating what's been raised here in our council chambers with our community and those concerns, so I just want to assure people that we're following up directly with those responsible for the airport to get the information that our community and you are asking for, and then we'll prepare that and get that back to you post haste.
Right, and thank you for that reminder as well, right? That RMMA is in the hands of Jeffco, but we are working closely with them to do what we can. And then, yes, as Councilor Zadi just mentioned, thanks to the Adams 12 Vice Chair. I happened to bring that up in my council report this evening, that I'd like to pass a resolution in support of the measures for the schools, and then we had public comment around it and more information supplied, so that's really great news there. So hopefully, maybe I can bring that forth next council meeting? I'm not sure what the process is around that.
We have, I believe, all three council, or all three of our school districts are seeking something.
All three, yeah. So we can, I'll come back around with a better informed idea of how to pass a resolution for the schools. And I think that is everything. Oh, the water, yes, okay. So I think it was already mentioned that we definitely want to follow up with the runoff that Mr. Palmer brought to our attention, just ensuring that we know what substances are in the water, if any. I'm not sure how we go about that, but I think we definitely should follow up, seeing as it was brought to us. And then as far as the land that Mr. Palmer mentioned, that's the first I've heard of it. I wasn't aware of land being, what did he say was in it? That there was a dry cleaning facility there at one point? So that's new information, so I guess on that ask, I'm just saying, can we dig up whatever background information that we have around it? That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Mayor Protim?
I too thank the community members for coming in and addressing us with the many issues that they've, that we've actually talked about with all of the other councilors. So I just wanted to throw in my support for, one, I do, I would like to see some type of resolution in support of our school district's searching for funding, so I would be behind that. The, try and keep this short and focused on the follow-up items. Regarding the uplands drainage, I know that we have received some email updates from staff regarding how, that our engineering team is working with the uplands developers to address the drainage issues, but this does look pretty gross. So I'm hoping this is, I mean, I would, I would not be happy with that on my street I'm hoping there's something that's already, yeah, I believe we're doing something in the area that I pray addresses this quickly. And with respect to the dry cleaner issue, and I know it's highlighted in Item 11C, but I am curious to know whether more expansive study has been done on the plume for the dry cleaner, if that does actually go beyond. I'm kind of assuming those sites are identified because they've been, it has been analyzed, but I would appreciate some follow-up on that. And I also, I did just look up the Jefferson County Planning Commission. Looks like the site in question was taken to Planning Commission on August 28th, so it would be great to follow up on that, and I suppose, hopefully, there's, you know, if there's some type of process within staff to be able to identify these earlier, or let us know that there's an issue of, that we can help support. Maybe this is the right time, maybe not, but that would be helpful. I know there have been some other sites, Adams County in particular, where we've had some concerns from community members, and with respect to our responses to the counties, so happy to help underline our concerns from staff. Yeah, thanks.
Councilor Hott?
Yes, I also want to thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight. I am also in favor of a resolution for our schools. I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke again about the Rocky Mountain Greenway, and I completely agree that public health and safety is more important than money, and it's important that we are doing the right thing. I am very, very frustrated learning about the change of zoning from Jefferson County around 108 between New and Old Wadsworth. We did not hear from this from the county. We know about this because two people came and spoke tonight. Had they not come to public comment, we still wouldn't know, and so I find that extremely frustrating personally, because we have not had a chance to give feedback on this issue, because we didn't know that they were doing that, and I don't, I think it's completely irresponsible to change zoning in a residential area to industrial. That's also one of the areas that is impacted by the noise from RMMA, and so. And then I'm also in favor of the Silent Railroad Crossing. I'm interested in learning more about that. I used to live right by that crossing, and I can confirm all day, all night horns 24/7. And I think that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Carmelia?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I forgot one point, which is the, there was discussion from a gentleman, Councilor Hott, you just reminded me. We talked about that area between Federal and Zuni, and I just wanted to ask our city manager, I have to be honest, I'm not entirely sure that I understood the full ask of the gentleman, and so I'm hoping we can follow up and get clarity around what the issue and the proposed solution is. I think that would help.
Councilor Ireland?
Also, I forgot about the, the dry cleaning fluid water groundwater problem. So on the map, we were shown three places that they tested, but they didn't show any testing in Adams County by the school. That's a concern to me. I think there needs to be some testing there, and to see if it goes north, south, east, west, where all that groundwater is going. I don't think it just stays in one place, so I'm concerned there wasn't enough testing there, and I think that we, I'm not going to vote yes on this tonight, because I don't think we have enough information.
Councilor Jamal?
Thank you, Mayor. One quick other thing, I know, one, thank you everybody for coming tonight. I think it's been made pretty clear that staff's going to follow up on all these variety of issues. One specific ask on the rezoning in Jefferson County, one of the speakers mentioned that our staff had been reached out to, so I'm just curious, one, if they were, when, in our response, two, what is kind of the standard protocol? In my time, I don't really remember that being a thing between like county and city. I know at the school districts, we usually reach out, so it would be a good learning piece of information for us, I think, so that we can understand both how they reach out to us and how potentially we might reach out to them when we do rezoning that, you know, is adjacent to their property. Then, the last thing, real quickly, for those of you who don't know, on the 19th, it's the third Thursday of every month, I do a town hall called Policy in Pilsner. It's Cocopelli Beer Company, 6:30 PM, and we'll be there till 8 o'clock. Very informal, just hang out, have food, or soda, or a beer, like I will have, and just talk about the community and get to know other community members, and you can address any questions. As you've seen here tonight, you often bring things to us, but this is just for us to listen to you. That's an opportunity to have a two-way conversation. In times, different folks show up from council. The mayor sometimes will come and join us, so it's a good time, and I appreciate the folks that show up, and it's an open invitation.
Besides everything that's been discussed, when it comes to supporting other people's elections, I think it's critical in a resolution to share, we need people to do their own homework. Just don't take anybody's word for anything. They should do their own homework, do their own evaluation. This is their property taxes and/or it's going to be sales tax, so, or their, the property tax, one way or the other, on their, their yearly, what they have to pay in. And what they don't understand is, it's not our property taxes. We have 3.65. I think my house pays $96 for city property tax, but we pay over 2,000 for our school district's property tax, and the bonds and the mill levies and whatever's there. So we really need to spell out so they understand, because if they think their property taxes are expensive now, and they add on, they just need to understand that and understand where it all comes from. This is the only way that school districts can get money, but the key has to be, they need to do their own homework so that they understand, because each school district is very... because each school district is very different with what their needs are. We've got one school district having closed 16, 18 schools, more to come, and the other school districts have their issues. So, I just think it's critical. We just don't blindly say, this is the way you should vote. That resolution should share how to be educated, why they need to be educated, and that money is going to show up on their property tax. Let's get on with Consent Agenda.
I've got a moment here. I'm doing text to the community. Facebook's not working, and Channel 8's not working.
Thank you. We're going to continue with our meeting. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through D? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8D.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through D. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Hang on, hang on. Did you have a question?
I do have one item for discussion that I should have mentioned at Mr. Andrews at the beginning of the meeting.
Go ahead.
Like to mention, for Item 8B, intent to withdraw, I am asking, so it sounds like once this dissolves, or if we withdraw from the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, I guess my question is, how do we keep informed? And can we ensure that we have some sort of strategic plan or annual meeting with those fellow stakeholders so that we are still on the same page with what might be going on?
This is dissolving, whether we dissolve... Do this or not tonight, there is that many that have already said. What we're trying to do, and I shared with city manager, that what they're trying now to do is, those that haven't done something, make an intent so that the final minutes, because we only have two more meetings, final minutes show what people did, so that when it is dissolved, people know what happened to Westminster, and we agreed and dissolved. The big thing is, there's no purpose for it anymore. We have been under DOE. David Abelson is retiring after 30 years, and in our case, with Womond Creek and Stanley Lake, we already work with our three others, the other cities, and testing... We already do more testing than has ever been done. And so, if we choose to have a group that meets differently, that's up to us. It will not be under DOE any longer. We won't be paying money into anything, but what we've been doing is going away, whether we want it to go away or not. And the people that have been running everything will no longer be there as of December 31st.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We have two more meetings, and we're just trying to wrap things up.
Okay. I just wanted to ensure that I bring it to mind, what our plan might be going forward. And so, I... To your point, this will be dissolved, since the remaining stakeholders have so far voted to withdraw. And so, this will just be the beginning. This was new information, and so I haven't fully figured out how we figure out how to go forward, but I think that we can follow up with discussion, maybe in our next study session. I could bring a more... A better ask to the city for us to figure out how we remain informed. But seeing as it's already going away, we have no options.
October is our last meeting. Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry, Mayor. May I add, just for... I'm sorry, for clarification. So, all of the current lines of communication, access to data, and access to remedies, all remain in place. All that's happening, as the mayor has said, is that the... This particular group is already dissolving, and this is purely an administrative action by the city to confirm that we're no longer part of a dissolving group. Nothing that council would do tonight would prevent the council from dissolving, because it's already been triggered, the stewardship council, I mean. And so, we can get back to you with respect to what those other existing avenues that are not impacted by this action tonight will remain to be. But I'm assured by staff that there's no... There's no negative consequence to this action tonight with respect to all of our other actions and remedies that we're continuing to pursue.
That is very helpful. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to 10A Public Hearing on Proposed 2025 Budget. This is a time for any community members here that have budget proposals for us. As was stated earlier, we're listening with our two ears. We aren't using our mouth tonight. We are taking notes. Staff is taking notes, and they will get us answers and help for next steps and whatever you're asking for, for next week. So, do we have anybody saying... Nope. The first speaker is Emily Brooks. Welcome, and sorry for the delays tonight.
That's okay. I will say, it is kind of past my bedtime, but you all are special. Before my comments, I just... Since I'm the first to comment, after Jody being the sole finalist, congratulations. Should have happened two years ago, in my opinion, but better late than never. Good job, council, on your choice. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the 2025 budget, and would like to address the proposed budget relative to the April 1st presentation on unfunded capital needs. Since April, the council took action on the fire department with the placement of a November ballot question. Seek an approval of a sales tax increase to support new stations, station improvements, and additional staff and equipment. There's also been several discussions about the deterioration of city streets, but as yet, no approved plan to address the significant gap. Meanwhile, the quality of our streets continues to decline. I think the most recent council direction was to pursue a street fee increase for only commercial accounts. While the desire to lessen the impact on residents based on a theory that businesses should carry a larger burden may be well-intended, to date, there is nothing proposed to demonstrate how this changed positions Westminster to have a sustainable street program. I'm concerned the ongoing search for a solution that has no increase in residential costs will cause continued delay and deterioration. This is an area that needs more responsible fiscal decision-making rather than wishful thinking. Recreational facilities were also highlighted as an area of unfunded need. I don't think there's been any discussion about recreation facility needs since then. Rec services are one of the most used and highly rated services in our community. I'm a 3-point user myself. I'd like to see more discussion and acknowledgement about this and plans to meet the need. Finally, I'm concerned that these ongoing capital needs are being discussed and decisions made in a very piecemeal fashion by the council. Given the scope of the issue, I can understand this, but I'd like to see a more complete, comprehensive capital plan presentation and discussion on how all of these significant funding gaps will be met in the short and long term. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Karen Colabity.
Welcome. Hello. Yeah, I want to speak about the budget. I am concerned that the two big budget items, the water treatment plant and the courthouse, those decisions were made, for the most part, in executive session. Those did not go to the vote of the people. I'm a little confused as to why the fire department is going to a vote of the people for... to generate funds for new equipment and firehouses, while the courthouse and the water treatment plant, they're both could be paid for by citizens, were done basically in closed executive sessions. I would guess that if the water treatment plant and the courthouse were up for a vote this November, both of them would fail, based on what the people in Westminster want to pay for. So, I am very concerned about these high-ticket items that I don't think have been thought out well. I know they've... The city council has engaged, it's called, experts, but sustainably, financial sustainability for these projects, as well as environmental sustainability, I don't think those have been considered well enough to include in the 2025 budget as just done-deal budget items. I have a real concern about them. There's like $220 million for the first phase of the water treatment plant. That doesn't even mirror what we have with existing, that we could work with better. You know, I... 60 years old, that's the excuse that's given for everything. I watched the Summer Olympics in Paris, and all the old buildings and structures they keep. They don't just put them in a landfill because they're 60 years old, but that seems to be the way we handle things around here, without trying to be imaginative and creative about doing what's best financially and environmentally sustainable for the citizens. So, those are my budget considerations.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Thank you again. It was a little hard to dissect the 300-plus pages of the budget on top of the 1,100-page agendas for this evening, but let's just take a stab at the city council priorities. I'll tell you the things. Item 4, with the signs, the development... The expanded language access services, including signs. The development signs need also be done in bilingual. I know I've talked about that numerous times with staff. I'm getting pushed back, and you'll see that in another document I have that's attached to part of an Uplands deal. You'll see it, and you'll understand it then. I don't think we have any business or need to join the Colorado Coalition for the climate action. That's a waste of money. We've got too many other things that need to be done in this city. Pride Festival, that's a definite no. I talked with several people over the weekend about this. Taxpayers don't want their money being used for a Pride Festival, because then what's next? We're going to have to have a German festival, or a Black History Month festival? Or just... No, stop now. We don't need a Pride Festival. Denver has one, Adams County has one. We don't need one. I don't believe that if a study was done, it would be justified. So, that's a hard no. Item 11, funding for the community foundation executive director. Ms. Martinez makes plenty of money for what she does, and all the kickback she gets from all of these other people. That's a hard no also on that one, Item 11. Item 12, the weed control on residential properties. I think the city needs to start with weed control on their own properties before they start talking about residential properties. And when I mean city properties and right-ofways, look around, you see it. If you don't, you're blind. So, let's do a hard no there on the residents until the city can come into play. The adult softball fees. If you want to play softball, you got to play. You got to pay. You know, looking at this chart, we're pretty much in line with everybody else. We shouldn't be funding softball teams. Again, we need streets repaired. The fire department's asking for $100 million. Let's use our money wisely. Same parking options for people living in their cars. We have that now. People just pull up and park wherever, which is wrong. That's a no-no also, a big hard no. Partnering with Jefferson County Health, unled study for public educational campaign. Not our problem. If the schools want to do that, if Jefferson County wants to do that with the schools, that's on them. Dash cameras for the police cars, that's an added expense we don't need, because that would entail more employees. The officers all have cameras that they wear. I think that's plenty fine, so hard no there also. Those are just the top of the order, because like I said, it was a little hard to go over 328 pages on top of the 1,100 that is in the agenda. So, we'll talk more on this later.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. Having no one else to speak, we will close that public hearing and go to Item B. And this is for a public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing 3, Block 4/PA-C, 1D located northwest of the intersection of 86th Avenue and Federal Boulevard. I will open the public hearing and ask if we have staff presentation. Oh, there you are. Welcome. You just appeared.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city councillors. We're going to get the computer up.
And Mayor, may I comment while we're getting the podium set up? We do understand that we are having streaming challenges with our ITAV infrastructure. It does not affect the meetings tonight in the sense that we are recording these, and we will resync tomorrow the video with the audio recordings from tonight. And so, there will be a seamless reposting of all of these meetings, so anything happening in the room tonight will be fully recorded and posted tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you again. John, planning manager here tonight to provide you with the presentation on this item. Before I begin the presentation, I'd like to acknowledge to the audience that Item 10D is... involves three separate ODPs for parcel A on the Uplands. Although it's one agenda item, staff will be presenting three separate public hearings, so that means three separate staff presentations, applicant presentations, and opportunity to public... for the public to comment.
Thank you.
So, staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo has associated attachments. Tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mail notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the record. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 1,053 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of the subject property. Three public notification signs were posted on the subject property, and the city's also posted the hearing date and time on its website. The project site is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Federal Boulevard and 86th Avenue. The boundary is in red, and it includes four acres that would be developed under this proposal. This is the site plan from Sheet 3 of the ODP in your attachment. The development plan includes 25,799 square feet of public charter school intended to house 300 students in one building. The school is an expansion of the Crown Point Academy across the street. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in more detail in the agenda memo. Staff recommends that city council hold a public hearing and approve the ODP as presented. Planning Commission reviewed this application on July 23rd and voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval by a vote of 7 to 0. Thank you. Is that better? My apologies. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of this ODP would meet the city's strategic planned priorities of access to opportunity and economic vitality, and we believe these are met with the approval of a new school and the educational opportunities that it will provide to future generations. This concludes the staff's presentation. The applicant has his own presentation to provide you. Staff is here to answer any of your questions alongside of the applicant, and we will be happy to take those when you're ready.
Thank you. Applicants have a presentation? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. All right. Put my glasses on for this. Good evening, Westminster City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Keith Owenil. For the last 13 years, I've had the privilege of being the executive director of Crown Point Academy of Westminster. As many of you know, Crown Point is a K public charter school serving the families of Westminster since 1997. Our current facility is located at 2900 West 86th Avenue, a building that has been in full capacity since 2013. Last year, with the opportunity to purchase four acres from the Uplands Development, this property is directly across from our current campus and was required with the goal of building a preschool through second-grade primary school. We've always had the desire to expand and always wanted to offer a preschool option to the community. With the strong demand for our current program and recent approved new housing developments nearby, it was an easy decision. Since then, we've working, we've been working very hard with our construction partners for architecture and permitting, E V Studio, owner's representative Christine Willie Matney, and general contractor Roach Constructors to prepare a plan for the new building presented before you tonight. We have several members of our team here to answer any questions you might have. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our, our presentation over to Principal Brian Welch from E V Studio, and I appreciate and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
All yours, Brian.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Not quite as tall. Appreciate the time today. You know, ultimately, we just wanted to walk through our, our planning process over the last three years. You know, the, the team with, with Crown Point has taken, you know, a lot of time to really consider their plan, really consider the building, and really take a thoughtful approach to how, you know, where we are at today. Just in summary, we're about 26,000 square feet. Will serve pre-K through second grade, approximately 275 students. And one thing to clarify is that this is part of the Uplands subdivision from a plat name. It is not part of the Uplands Development. It is a, it has been separated from the Uplands as a whole. So sometimes people see the name and they associate it with the Uplands Development. This is simply a plat name, but it's not part of the, the development that you guys will obviously have heard a lot about and will hear about more later today. So just a clarification on that. As you can see from the layout, there is a public road to the north as well as an existing public road to the south. And, you know, really one of the, the big pieces we've worked through a lot is the circulation for traffic. It's obviously one of the main concerns with, with any kind of educational facility is how do we get people in, people out? Obviously, peak hour, peak traffic. We have a current facility to the south and a new one to the north. Big pieces out with the pre-K is you have more parent drop-off, more parent interaction. So that's why there is a separate parking lot, separate entrance, and really creating that circulation pattern on the north side to keep that pre-K traffic to the north and in drop-off traffic to the south through the circular drive. You also see it's laid out so there's not a lot of crossing conflicts with any of the, with the current facility. And, you know, right now, looking at the original facility of 82 stalls, 48 drop-off stalls for 470 students, we're looking at 52 stalls, 50 drop-off stalls for 275 students. So we really feel that we're, we're increasing capacity and really helping this entire development function and flow a lot better. One thing we've looked at is obviously the, the traffic impact on 86th, traffic impact on federal, as well as the, the neighbors in the area. The floor plan is 12 classrooms. One of them is a, a flex, flex classroom, but it's two pre-K, three kindergarten, three first, three second, as well as the, the additional amenities that come with, with the school. The elevations show you just kind of the, the general feel. Obviously, it's, it's going to have similar character to the building across the street, but also wanted to have its, its own identity. One of the things with building a, an early education facility is making something that's fun, that students want to go to, but also educational, and really gets them ready to move into the next facility. So really intentional about how it looks and how it feels and how, how it gets kids Couple of the big impacts that we've looked at throughout the last handful of years is obviously noise and sound. One of the things that was very intentional is having the playground facility on the west side between federal and the school, just as far as kids and noise and inactivity of, of having a buffer using the school to create that buffer between the neighbors of the east and, and the road to the west. Traffic is obviously something we've talked about a lot. It will have a staggered start time from the, from the school, from the existing school in the south. We can talk a little bit more about that, that combination as well with pickup and drop-off. And then obviously speeds, not changing the speeds, not training, not changing the, the conditions of the, the streets that are, you know, 86th, Decatur, or anything else in that area. I'll step back to one piece just as far as circulation. We talked a little about pickup and drop-off a lot with the planning commission. And one thing that I, I don't know people truly understand with a place like Crown Point is the amount of thought and care that they put into pickup and drop-off. It's, it's really impressive, I think, back to what you commonly think about with a school when the bell rings, like the kids run out of school and, and school's out. If you ever watch all of these people, and every single one of them takes time in the parking lot every day, so if you want to find them, they'll be in the parking lot.
3:30 on Decatur.
Every student is associated with a number. A, a car comes up, the number is called in, the number is transferred to the classroom, and that individual is let out directly to that vehicle. It is, is very specific, it's very secure, and it's a process. So there is not a, a letting out of the, the kids where they all get released, but it's a specific kid to a specific parent or vehicle. And so there's not a lot of this, I, I think overall, there are two kids that walk with the walkers once all of the vehicles have moved out, those two walkers are let out of school. So there, there's not this release of kids. We've already talked a lot about pickup as well. Pickup is, they're specifically have talked to their, their parents, just about, there is not going to be a transfer of kids from one to the other. You will not be walking them, you will be dropping them off at one facility or the other. As far as construction goes, one of discussions about construction and staging and sequencing and having the secondary entrance off of federal will help. That is the primary construction entrance to keep construction activity off of 86th and really kind of creating their own entrance and, and facility on-site to not, to not impact the neighbors. This is where we're at on project schedule. We're working through construction documents right now, getting ready to permit with the state, but obviously worked through a lot of steps along the way. Lastly, just wanted to open up for questions and, and see if there's any specific questions for our team, whether it be of the process with the school or obviously the, the layout and, and the plan, and we're happy to address them.
Questions? Mayor Proton.
If you can go back to that neighborhood impact slide, I just want to confirm what I'm looking at here. Is there an extra road next to Decatur, or is this just not scaled to size? Because I thought it was going, the site actually goes up to Decatur, but this image is throwing me off.
No, I think your aerial is, is shifted on this one, but yes, it is connecting directly to Decatur.
Right. Like, what did I miss?
Yeah, this is a little different overlay where you're steering out to Decatur.
There we go. That looks more like it. Okay. I just had a question about the, I've never seen a drop-off zone with like eight different lanes, and so I was just curious about how that worked.
It's, the, the biggest thing for them is stacking and staging vehicles, right? And so there's a lot of parents that come up, so, so creating that staging and stacking room for vehicles is, is, is really important for their, their process. So similar to how they do it across the street, this gives a lot more staging room. And so really what we look at is the amount of cars, the amount of kids, and the amount of time. So the more stacking and staging, the more we can drop off that, drop that pickup time. So it's, really what they do is they, just similar to how they do it now, is they direct cars into each row, and then they bump over the next row, and they give them to all stage prior to pickup.
Okay. So it's trying to get them off the streets and staging out. Okay. Two other quick questions. I see buses in your drawings, and so I was just curious, are there buses that I, I'm just not familiar with charter schools with buses? Okay.
Yeah, no current buses. We've talked a lot about the potential for busing. It's always important to just plan for busing because they're slightly bigger than cars and their movements are different, so, you know, really showing how we have separate drop-off and circulation if we needed that at some point.
Okay. And then the last thing I had was just a shared concern from the planning commission comments about the kids going in between schools. I drop off myself at a charter school with three different stages of kid going to three different locations, and so they just, you know, there's just a reality. So I, I don't know. I'm sure maybe you're super controlled, but I think it would be safer to have a pedestrian crossing and not just assume that no one's going to cross between the schools.
Can I talk? You bet.
All right. Well, after the planning commission, we, we took the comments and went to Rich Palmer to commission a traffic, traffic study, works for Felsberg Holt. And the old big, I'll pass this out, just so you can take a look, but he's recommending a crosswalk at 86th and then supervised during peak hours, morning and afternoon if needed. That would be supervised by the staff. So we are planning on adding that piece into the proposal. If there's more the city would like to see there with, you know, maybe, you know, a light fixture or those things would obviously work with the city, but this is what we're looking at this point from the planning commission's work. So I'll pass this out, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
I think that's, it's great that the planning commission's been heard. Thank you.
It really is always an evaluation of, okay, do we, do we watch how this evolves? Do we watch the traffic patterns? Do we jump into adding crossings? And really, it's, you know, we're talking about one block length, and so they do have protected crossings on each side. So it really is just an evaluation of how does this work, and really making sure that, you know, obviously having staff and having people out on-site is a big piece of the process too, so.
With the age of the, the kids at the school, we don't want them crossing back. It's just not something that, there's no benefit whatsoever.
Did you have any others?
No.
Okay. Counselor Carmelia.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, for asking about the crosswalks. That was going to be my question as well, but it's still, I guess it still is, I'm asking about Decatur. Are we planning for crosswalks between the residents and the residential neighborhood and the school? Or maybe I missed that?
Right now, there's a controlled intersection there with a curb ramp on the south and the north side, so we would look at, at that intersection as, as a crossing for the students as well as obviously federal with the, with the potential light when that goes in.
Okay. And I, this area is a little busier, so I'm not entirely sure that it really pertains, but my first thought with any development is, has our planning commission taken a look to see if there's any way to make this more accessible by bike and by walking? And it sounds like we've only got two walkers, but have we taken a look at bike lanes or anything like that? Accessibility to the neighborhoods around it?
Yeah, obviously, part of the entire Uplands Development, when they first looked at the land area incorporated, you know, a lot of traffic analysis, a lot of pedestrian way finding, and, you know, one of our big things is we're reducing traffic volume and pedestrian volume a bit from the residential, I believe it was residential, from the original plan. So I, I know they've looked at it from a master plan perspective, and, and really that's, falling is a, a very small piece of that is truly kind of where we're sitting with, with their overall traffic plan.
I would add too, with the, just the timing of the project, that we look at opening in fall of '26 in the sense of that we wanted the development to have a, a head start, partly for enrollment purposes, but also to see the demand for walkers, bike riders, those kinds of pieces. So we're flexible to creating solutions based on our kids' needs. Right now, we don't get a lot of kids from Prospect or Point. Some that come and they walk, but most parents are coming from all over in Westminster. I think that might shift some with people purchasing new homes, but until they come online, I'm not sure what those numbers would be. Obviously, it's going to be very attractive to people who are purchasing homes nearby to, to have access to the school, you know, in that location, and that's some of the reason that we're moving forward with the expansion.
Which is great. I think that's something just in general for our city to keep in mind is, I think that the accessibility will become more pertinent, like you said, as those, as the development fills up and out and as people move in. So I just want to make sure that our city has room to allow for us to put in, you know, bike lanes if needed, or I know this is an upcoming discussion, I think, around transit. So just making sure that we're not cutting off the availability in the future for that to happen. That's all.
Any other questions? I, thank you, and maybe after public comment, we'll have something else, but let's open up public testimony, and do we have anybody signed up? The first speaker is Elizabeth Lynn Horst. Welcome.
Good evening, Westminster City Council. My name is Elizabeth Lynn Horst, and I am a resident of the Shaw Heights area in Westminster. I will be, tonight I am speaking on the matter of the Uplands Development in regards to this public hearing. I am asking about road closures in the area. 84th Avenue, Walt Irving, Bradburn Drive, Le Place to Lowell. State is open October 1st. Shaw Boulevard, Circle of Lowell, full closure except to local residents October 25th completion date. I also want to mention that the last closure stated has a strong sewer smell near it, of which the smell is strongest by Thomas Learning Centers. From the months of June 2024 to August, I have seen the city government Facebook page post multiple different road closures within the city. These road closures have caused increased traffic, but when I tried to look to the city for when these closures may be open, nothing had been reported. I want to ask that the city be transparent for those that live in the Shaw Heights area and share this information in an easily accessible area. As a resident, I want to look to my city for these answers, yet I, yet I have had to go to the website of a development, which has been constantly changed regarding opening dates of roads. I thank you for your time tonight and hope that the city government considers reporting on these road closures. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer.
Thank you. Couple of things. Thank you for the catch on the crosswalks by the planning commission because that was going to be something I was going to bring up. I do have a concern with the Decatur Street traffic with the two developments, the Maker Housing and the other low-income housing projects just north and northeast of here, what effect that's going to have on the Decatur, the 87th, and the 86th Avenue accesses there. I'm concerned about that with traffic in the morning and the evening with kids being in the area and people rushing to get to and from work. And I believe, I could be wrong in what I heard, but I, I thought he stated there was a road to the north, 87th. That, that's not there, that's not been developed yet, so I, I might have misunderstood. I don't really have a problem with the school other than making sure that there are designated crosswalks, preferably on 86th, to get between the two schools, keep the kids off federal. And as far as bikes, I don't see many first, second, third graders or kindergarters riding their bikes to school, so I think that's kind of a moot point. I'm sorry, Claire. It just, it's a moot point. I would like to acknowledge that someone on your team caught the error in the signage, the public signage that was put out. Yeah, I caught that on the 28th, the night of the 28th of the Uplands hearing. Good job on getting that rectified promptly. Good job.
We caught it too, John.
Okay. Good job. Because I would have called you on it, you know that. Again, I don't have a problem with these people. I've, I've talked to them many times, madled them many times. I'm just concerned about safety on 86th, need for a crosswalk there. It's potentially one coming from the Prospector's Point on the east, because at some point, somebody might be able to afford to send their kids to this charter school. I can't guarantee it because it's a pay-to-learn program, program over there, but I think that should be thought out long before bypassed or even thought of, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. That's the last person we had signed up. Would somebody from the school like to address the pay piece?
We're, we're a free public charter school, so our student fees are 80. We're a free public charter school, so our student fees are $85 for the year. And parents can ask those to be waived if they qualify for pre-reduced lunch. So I do want to also just say really quickly that 87th Avenue is a negotiating cost-sharing agreement that I negotiated with the Uplands. So that is in the budget and in our plans as well. We pay and they reimburse us as the road is completed. And Roach Constructors knows that's part of our plan as well. So I just want to address those. Thanks, guys, for your time.
Any other questions of either us or the applicant?
I'm assuming we did a traffic study with our engineering folks and...
We ended up doing two traffic studies, once before the planning commission, a long time ago, and once after their comments. We re-engaged.
Okay. Were they cumulative and included the new development for Uplands?
Yeah, those were looked at, their traffic. So the Uplands has shared all of their work with us as part of our agreement with them. When we purchased the property, we needed access to everything that they had, and they were willing to offer that.
Okay. And did our staff have any concerns with respect to speed, traffic, coming down to Decatur? I'm just kind of curious. I don't see anyone from engineering, though, so.
None that were brought to my attention.
No. Okay. All right. Well, I hope we continue to, to watch it as these sites develop. I know that there's always impatient folks around school time drop-offs, so.
Just, I appreciate Brian's comments as an outsider. I've been on the street, literally, today for 13 years, along with several of the staff, and we were constantly watching out for not just student safety, but parents and neighbors paying attention. And we really try to be respectful neighbors and move traffic through. It's one of the things that we take very seriously and that we staff hold. So it's something that's on our minds. Feel free to come out, 7:30 tomorrow or 3:30 in the afternoon, and check us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to staff for sitting through all of this, and good luck at 7:00 in the morning. I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Oh, wait, wait. You guys are late. You got to put it on there.
Sorry, real quick, I just wanted to mention, comment on road closures, communication. We've heard this a few times, this is just for staff, that we need a better way to communicate this more centrally, website or something. I've heard that, I think Counsel Island and I have, we've heard this several times from folks where they make the idea, suggestions of maybe we have a singular calendar of all the various current or future or expected closures or big projects, because this does impact people's day when they don't know that's, that something will be closed. So just a note that we need to do something about that.
Counselor Demont?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. We're ready. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing three, block four, PA-C1-D. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item B6, B as in boy, six. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Thanks again for being here tonight. That brings us to item 10C, public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing three. I will open the public hearing. Staff, there you are again. You just pop up.
Thank you again, John McConnell, planning manager, to present to you tonight. This is for the Uplands filing three, block one, track B ODP. Staff agenda memo has been created. Tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo has associated attachments. Tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mail notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the record at this time. This filing has the same notification radius, so the same people were notified for this particular ODP public hearing as the last one. So there were a total of 1,053 property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet of this property that were notified tonight. The project site is located on the southwest of intersection of Decatur Street and 88th Avenue. The boundary in red is the two acres that would be developed under this proposal. This is the site plan from sheet 13 of the ODP. You can see that the position of the building adjacent to Decatur Street, it serves as the aerial apparatus access road for the fire access. The publicly accessible private parks located to the north of the building and the courtyard in the center. The parking lot is located to the west of the building, and there is a park and a dog run planned for the large parking lot island that you see there. Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing ODPs. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria, as outlined in more detail in the agenda memo. Staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing and approve the ODP as presented. The planning commission reviewed this application on July 9th and voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval by a vote of seven to zero. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities of access to opportunity and economic vitality, which is met through the creation of new affordable housing that will allow for diversity of residents to make Westminster their home. This concludes the staff presentation. And as always, staff will be here to answer questions if you need us. The applicant has a presentation is ready to present to you tonight.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, Mayor Protem. Counselors, thank you for this opportunity to address all of you. My name is Marcus Pockner. I'm a land use and community outreach consultant for Uplands. I will note, as we all know, there are multiple hearings on the docket tonight. I am giving just a very brief overall update on Uplands. We won't repeat that, obviously, for each one of the hearings. So I have it here before the presentation on this. So it's just three slides, as we always try to present this updated information. I just want to note and echo what we heard from the community. We just completed our third quarter, our quarterly meeting with the community in late August. There was the suggestion that not only to have construction closures on our website, but also to move those to the city. So we committed there. We'd worked with the city to move those. People did not want to necessarily have to go to the Uplands website to look at those dates. So we will provide that and will continue to provide that. And of course, that presentation is available for all to watch as well. So we share that. There is another one coming up in November. We did also present a very detailed construction schedule that went through all of those road closures. I acknowledge and certainly appreciate that the community, particularly the Lowell corridor, 88th, 84th, Bradburn, we are really trying to consolidate construction through spring of 2025 on that exterior, as you see in this image here. A lot of the trunk infrastructure, which always was first. So then construction can occur on the site and off of the public roadway, the public realm. So we appreciate the patience, and we're continuing to work with the city on all of those issues. I will just say, for the community, looking at this map, this shows the overall Uplands parcels. You see the site plans that are approved, the neighborhoods that are approved. In the yellow mustard color are hearings that are scheduled tonight, really the four corners of parcel A, again, showing the infrastructure and then moving internal to the site. And then, of course, our presentation here tonight is focused on C. Again, we have a full team available to answer any questions, and I'll be happy to go through any of the construction questions that came up earlier.
And I just wanted to thank you for changing your meeting time so that people could attend the, we had a town hall scheduled, and it was on public safety. It was very well attended, and we just thank you for working your piece a little differently.
Absolutely. It worked out great. We had a lot of attendees online as well, so it worked out very well. I will say, Mayor, just the next slide here, the presentation, we always show the PDP again, focused on, of course, the infrastructure, the drainage, the Shaw Boulevard improvements that are happening, but then the, the infrastructure that is coming after it, the community amenities. The picture on the right is actually looking east on 88th. You're starting to see that on the south side. The right side of that is the 10-foot multi-use trail that is really coming in. So you are really starting to see this get threaded and connected to the existing community. So, folks, I'm going to transition from there, understanding that that was kind of the overall Uplands update, to, you know, really say that we're honored to present as part of the Maker team here today. Thanks to John for the staff report. We are here to talk about C1A. We have a full team members here, engineers, consultants, architects, that are available to answer any questions that you may have. This is the site, C1A, so that little orange box, about two acres there on that site, just east of federal, south of 88th, the site that we are going through. We'll go through a lot of details about the site and how we've approached it from a planning standpoint. First, I'm going to have Chuck Christian come up from Maker and introduce himself and give a little background on the project as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, City Council. My name is Chuck Christian. I'm a housing developer with Maker. I'm pleased to engage this presentation with you and represent Maker as the project lead. My portion of this will cover the general outline. I'm sure you may be familiar with, with Maker. Our home office is here in Westminster, and we take a very special interest in this particular municipality. And we're excited about this opportunity to keep raising the bar when it comes to affordable housing. We hope to lead this particular project with sustainability. We are pursuing a zero-energy-ready homes certification, which essentially is, is with our solar panels, we'll be able to either replace or make a huge impact for the entire building's energy use. And then in addition to the 70 affordable units, we are also building a commercial space, which is going to be for the Adams County Head Start program. And then finally, this project will dedicate 18 units, 18 of those 70 units, for the intellectually and developmentally disabled population. We will dedicate those units to members of that population. Currently, there are 13,000 individuals with a cognitive disability in Adams County. Right now, as existing supply, there, there are only 10. So we're excited for a chance to, to more than double that. Moving on, so with this particular slide, it best portrays the various things that Maker does for the community. We're not just, we don't just simply collect rent. Every single dollar that we raise, every dollar, and every dollar that either we earn in an application is, in essence, an investment towards programs like these housing vouchers, rent and utility assistance, workshops, job trainings. You know, we'll occasionally do some, some courses on how to eat right, how to spend well. These are things that, frankly, they're a luxury and they should not be. This is the AMI chart. So how to read this chart, for example, would be the 30% AMI, the most that we could charge for a one-bedroom is going to be $733. That includes utilities. So in this particular project, we are paying for all dry utilities and all wet utilities. On, on the right is the, is typical occupations, and we find those from, from our 17 existing communities. They're, of course, general, general realities. And right here is the unit mix. So when we're going through this, the planning for this building, we, we're targeting the one and two bedrooms, and we're targeting these specific AMIs. Again, that's average median income. We're targeting these to best symbiotically work with the next-door overlook at Uplands. I would like to point out the capture rate. So capture rate is, it's, it's essentially you have the, I always get these two mixed up. The capture rate is, you have like the total amount of renters and then, no, you get the existing supply, I'm sorry, the existing supply divided by the total amount of renters. So hypothetically, at 100% capture rate, the occupancy should be stable. We're averaging 3.32% on this particular development. So the 30% AMI units, they are, they will include some housing vouchers. Actually, the, all the housing vouchers will be going to the IDD population, and we will also accept individual vouchers. And, and the remaining units will eventually be income restricted. When it comes to the, the project funding, so the total project is going to be $30, $35 million. You know, if you do the math, it's going to be about $500,000 per unit. Yeah. It's, it's definitely something that, it's a little bit higher. I myself, my background is more in market rate housing. And, you know, when, when we saw this challenge, we saw that there would be, we had a chance to put three different buildings together into one, and a chance to really stretch out every single dollar that we could do. And, you know, with that, we kind of take it as a point of pride. And, you know, this, this could take three buildings, or, you know, we could really just, just go out on a limb and risk ourselves a little bit and just really try to make a difference with this building. And we're very happy to showcase this to everyone here. Finally, of course, the Head Start. I won't spend too much time on this one, but, you know, it's an entirely free program. So there's 7,400 square feet for our commercial space. We're very happy to have them as a, as an anchor tenant. They, they will offer free educational services and free meals. And my favorite bullet point here is that, according to the research on their website, enrolled children in preschool are more likely to graduate high school, and they have improved social, emotional, and behavioral development. So in a way, the Uplands building can help both current poverty issues and, and future ones. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck, very much. We are excited to have Head Start as a partner in this project as well. Just to refresh on the underlying PDP, what leads to this plan, you see C1A here. I just want to disclose, as you all see it, the numbers that are on the side of the PDP, they're for all of C1 parcel, right? So just understanding our numbers are going to be much less here. This obviously transitions down to the south, to the Crown Point campus that we talked about as well. So then, looking at this chart, the PDP compliance chart, you see overall, those first three lines, we are moving forward. This actually will be over the affordable housing that we have promised that we would deliver on the Uplands site. And then you see specifically on this site, you see that lower density obviously is more to come on the balance of C. There is, I will note, a substantial setback on one of the perimeters setbacks. We want to show that and talk about that tonight as we go through the design. So we're going to transition now. Kaylee will walk through, Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design, the design and the exceptions, and then we'll come back and close it out.
Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Counselors, Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. I'll be walking you through the specifics of the neighborhood plan for C1A, the neighborhood within the Uplands community. Within the right-hand image, you can see how the proposal fits within the overall C neighborhood. We've got Crown Point that just came forward to the south side of the C parcel, and then the remaining two empty boxes here will be a future development that has not yet been designed. The four-story building is strategically placed along Decatur Street from close to the public land dedication and future park while also activating the perimeter streets, providing 70 total residential units with a mix of one and two-bedroom units serving families and intellectual and developmentally disabled. 32 carport spaces are provided for residents, along with surface spaces for residents and the Head Start program. A large central dock park is placed in the center of the parking area. Located at the northern edge along the regional trail is our publicly accessible private park. The Head Start commercial space is located in the southernmost end of the building, accompanied by outdoor space, which will host our three-to-five-year H-Rage playground, which will also... by outdoor space, which will host our three-to-five-year age range playground, which will also be open to this community's residents with children of that age range. The proposed neighborhood provides greater connections through a 10-foot regional trail from Federal Boulevard to the future park space and the Camanesh Park. Several sidewalks are provided internal that wrap the building and connect the dock park area and the greater adjacent pedestrian network. The enlargement of the illustrative and greater detail of the outdoor amenities this community provides. The top right image is our publicly accessible private park, which provides a sensory garden located in the northeastern edge of the community. The bottom image is a private courtyard, which features a grill, eating area, an art centerpiece, a trellis, and other social elements with an open lawn for residents. Head Start, as discussed, is located on the southern edge of the building and will have its own entrance for ease of pickup and drop off, and will also have reserved parking spaces. The plan shows the Head Start program playground concept. This is aimed to support and promote sensory, dramatic play, muscle play, and support development of growth for kids ages three to five. The architecture pulls inspiration from the local landmarks, such as the Westminster Castle and other Colorado sites such as Mesa Verde, through colorings, striations, and textures that are incorporated into the building facade and form. As denoted in the upper left-hand image, here you can see how the inspiration is reflected in the brick choices and how the building will look from 88th Avenue and Decatur. In the upper right is taken from the southern edge and shows where the playground for the Head Start program will be. In the lower left shows the building from further west on 88th Avenue, coming from Federal Boulevard. And then lastly, the lower right-hand image is our private courtyard space that featured those elements we had just discussed. This neighborhood requests a couple of exceptions from the city standards and code, which is generally requested to allow for the best design possible for residents and provide high-quality housing and achieve various goals throughout Uplands. Within this site-specific ODP, we are asking for a couple of exceptions, and they have always been anticipated within Uplands in order to comply with the vision established in the Uplands PDP and provide the much-needed housing within the city of Westminster. City code also supports the need for the exceptions. Uplands is zoned PUD, and defined here. This zone district will utilize the physical characteristics of the site through the reductions of setbacks and road restrictions, provide diversification and flexibility of housing types, housing prices, and overall design. This list here outlines what is being requested for the multifamily design standards and are justified within the ODP and the standards of approval provided in your packet. An exception to the earth firming is requested as it will further disconnect and limit the street activation in lieu of additional plantings are provided to help screen without disrupting the aerial apparatus. The provided commercial space is slightly lower than the 0.1 minimum requirement of FAR. This proposal meets the exact needs for the Head Start program by providing right-sized commercial space. A public agency and additional space would not be desirable and would only increase the overhead costs of this publicly funded program. We have designed this space to their needs to also keep with the constraints set by the state and federal funding agencies. A rundown of the financing hurdles that this affects has also been submitted in the standards of approval. This site features a large parking lot accompanying 102 spaces and 18 adjacent spaces via street parking. Between these two options, the provided parking meets the total requirements just in an alternative way. An entry meeting is not desirable due to the addition of the road width that this requires in order to maximize the available parking and maintain the same number of units. Alternative entry landscaping is proposed and provided. The building features multiple elements which create a cohesive style and structure. Because of this, the code steps and massing requirements are not met. Alternative elements such as visual setback and top floor, as well as recessed and cantilevered balconies and patios are provided on all units, providing the building with opportunities for massing relief. As part of the Uplands sustainability commitments, low reflective cool roofs are required for larger buildings. This is in conflict with the roof pitch and material requirements within the multifamily design standards. And due to the size of the site, a reduction, the overall landscape areas also requested. Similarly to the landscape, plantings have been strategically moved to ensure they're placed where they can be enjoyed as much as possible. Plant counts meet the required amounts but are provided in different locations. A couple more technical and nature exceptions, like the location of the trash room, which will service the building. There was not enough room to bring the trash truck into the parking lot, so this is located off of Decatur. The proposed curb cut has been approved by the city engineers, and similarly, the water meter pit locations have been altered slightly, which has also been reviewed by the city engineers. Rooftop mechanical equipment will not be visible from the street, as shown in the screening exhibits submitted within the ODP. And finally, we are requesting exceptions to the proposed building and site setbacks. In general, reducing these allows the community to be designed to its max potential by providing much-needed affordable housing within Westminster. Instead of featuring non-functional landscape areas, which would require extensive water and maintenance, this request is aligned with both Uplands and the city of Westminster's sustainability goals. Further, we worked closely with the fire department as they require closer access for their aerial access ladders, which require the building to move closer to Decatur. I'm going to hand this back over to Marcus to run us through the remainder.
Terrific. Thank you, Kaylee. I'll finish up here. As you all know, the standards of approval, John went through them. We believe we're in full compliance. I would note item four, that specifically talks about exceptions that are warranted by virtue of design or special amenities incorporated into the development proposal. This is a very specific development proposal for a population that really does provide three different buildings in one building and the opportunity to provide a Head Start program as well. We've really tried to tailor a lot of our exceptions in the design of the building around that. Again, we believe we are in full compliance with the underlying PDP and MODP. We look forward to continuing the development of parcel C there, as we've talked to all of you about. We are in, it's been a great pleasure to work with Maker and bring forward this application, and we're here to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions this time? Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to get some clarification on the playground area because the landscaped area is so sparse. I was wondering how those, you know, the families/kids that are living there would be able to access the playground. Can you clarify?
This playground here within the Head Start program?
Yeah.
Yes. So there are going to be several other amenities provided within there. We just didn't go into the whole spiel. So there'll be sand and water play that will be found within there. There'll be dramatic play found on the west side of the site with a mountain cabin, play hut, stump activity table, and integrate art boards into the existing fence. And then there'll be a large musical play area as well, and some mounded synthetic turf play space, as well as port and play servicing provided throughout. And then this will be open to residents that have children ages three to five during off-hours.
So is there any accommodation? Where would kids under three or over five go? I mean, also, probably for staff, curious to know when the neighborhood park just to the east would be developed?
Yes, it's anticipated that those kids would use the adjacent PLD just to the east of this planning area.
And the PLD currently is just like a plot of land with some native grass?
Correct. And then there will also be other parks integrated within parcel A that they will be able to access as well.
It's kind of sparse. Open space for the rest of the, for the property, so it would be helpful to understand when the parks will actually be built out for this neighborhood. You know, the, I think I brought this up a long time ago. You know, this is a dense area. It is a development where we have a mix of uses, but a lot of families, a lot of activity, and we have less PLD that was provided on-site in order to provide more of a urban walkable neighborhood. And it's just sort of like death by a thousand cuts as we kind of just take some, you know, we do developments like this, and I appreciate all of the work that's gone into, you know, getting this project onto the site. I understand it's tight. I just want to emphasize how important it is to have the park space for the density and the population we're creating here.
Sorry, I'm deferring to the city if they were going to answer that on the park. You are correct. I think you all know we have made all PLD dedications, so that has occurred. Counselor, I'm certainly not taking in any question about that. I think the other thing, on the north side of this building, we also have the sensory trail. As you know, on the north side of 88th is also kind of the trailhead that then connects to all the additional park facilities that are to the north. So we think it's so important also to establish those connections, as you mentioned earlier, to provide that and in the park. So we share that. We hope that park comes along right away. I will state, and I'm so sorry that I'm trying to bring this back from memory, I think one of the things that we all concentrated on when we had a little bit less PLD is that the money, the cash and loo, would also be dedicated to bring parks forward in this area as well, right, sooner. So really dedicated to that. So again, we've tried to reinforce that by basically putting those towards a fund to bring these parks forward faster.
Thank you. I don't know if staff had any.
Just a little bit to add regarding the PLD dedication that is just to the east of this. I understand that PRL is working on engaging a consultant for the design of that. I don't have a timeline to share with you on that, but I can get that information and return that to you.
That would be helpful. I don't know if we reflect this at all in the CIP for the next five years. I mean, we have it in our budget, but I, it would be helpful to just understand where these fit in. And it doesn't have to be, I know we have certain park spaces that still haven't been built out after a long time, but I think it's just critical for the fact that we are locating a lot of our affordable housing in one area, and I'm, so I'm very sensitive to what we're providing and the timing of providing the appropriate park space.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes. Before I ask questions, I just want to say it was, I appreciated learning more about Makers. It sounds like a great organization, and so thank you for the background. And thank you to everyone who came. These presentations are always so complete and thorough, and thank you for that. And then I'm grateful to hear about the housing variability in what will be offered. My question at first is around what type of housing will be offered? Is this going to be wheelchair accessible? I know we did mention mentally handicapped. What else, what will be provided? I know I myself have friends in wheelchairs who, they have a hard time finding anything in Colorado to live in, so just wondering what's going to be offered?
Yes. Yeah, so at this, at our building, we will offer five ADA units in addition to two hearing, I think, auditory. And in addition, so the IDD units are integrated and inclusive, so, you know, so everybody can be neighbors and we can foster a good community space. And in addition to that, actually, we're adopting, it's called the Kelsey Standards, which is a cognitive designs that help our IDD population. Like things like, you know, non-slip flooring and auto shut-off appliances.
That's really great to hear. Thank you. Okay. And then as far as the layout, I have similar concerns to the Mayor Protem. I just feel like what I'm looking at is a giant heat island, and so that, I have concerns around that just in general. I'm not saying I have solutions. It's good to see that we're going towards zero energy. That's fantastic. But is there any tree coverage that's going to be included? From what I see, and I'll just pile on, I see, you know, some plants is what I see.
Let me just get to that sheet really quick. So we actually are going to be providing above the required amount of trees required on the site, especially within the right-of-way. So we are meeting those requirements necessary. We've worked very closely with the fire to make sure that those aren't outside of the way of the fire aerial apparatus.
I see. So it's around the outside and it's...
And then also internal within the parking lot islands as required. And then we have some up to the north as well on the publicly accessible private park and in our internal courtyard.
Okay. And I don't think there's anything that can be done to it. I'm just curious, what is the, I mean, I hate looking at more parking lot than building, but, so what is our building versus parking lot ratio or parking space, sorry?
The overall percentage of the parking versus the building?
Yeah. No, I just, home for parking, like how many parking spots did we provide for home?
So we are providing a total of 120 parking spaces, and we're required to have 120 off-street. We're providing 102 internal in the parking lot, and then the 18 parking spaces are provided via on-street.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. And then if there's anything else we can do about this, if we can't provide like ground bark or in more areas, then it looked like it was stone. What was the material outside of the building? Is there a way to add, I don't know if it's, oh, I guess, yeah, I'm looking at that, I guess, I guess there's more grass over here than I realized. I was thinking this bottom picture, the stone, how much of that, it's just right outside. I was thinking, is there a way to spray paint it or reduce reflective light or et cetera? What else can we do?
Just a couple of comments that I would make. That first picture up on the upper left is looking to the left is Decatur and looking west on 88th. So it shows that connectivity to all of the 88th amenities. There is the most remarkable open space in, some of the most space in Westminster, right on the other side of that or in Federal Heights. So we really tried to focus on that. That bottom right image, Counselor, that you're looking at, that's that internal courtyard that's really, we found a way to put landscaping into that as well. I'll also note that this site, looking at it without the building planned or future buildings to the west of it, feels a little bit more out of park, out of space as well, right? So I think in some ways, that's going to blend in more to the neighborhood. I get all these comments. I think the one thing that I point out is multifamily housing is a use allowed here, right? And that use, if it were market rate, wouldn't come with even these great amenities. We are bringing forward a playground. We are bringing forward these types of things that wouldn't be found in another multifamily. So we actually think we're providing those services that wouldn't be provided otherwise until that park comes along. So we thought this was a remarkable way to bring in some of those play amenities and really incorporate them into a larger neighborhood.
Thank you. And to your point, I do think it's incredible that the plan here is to incorporate and work in partnership with Head Start. That's fantastic. And I realize that these spaces need to be accessible, and so that went into my thoughts when I realized, you know, it needs to be, you know, wheelchairs need to get through, et cetera. I guess I'm just asking if there's anything else we can do to provide canopy and coverage because I've already seen examples where we've let ourselves down recently, and we've made big frying pans, and so if we can avoid that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great suggestion. We will continue to look at that. I think Kaylee's right, we're providing more trees than required. That doesn't mean it's going far enough. I think we'll continue to work at that. You know, we just saw a school. I don't know if there's opportunities to work even with Crown Point on their playground, some of those amenities, are there things like that? So we will, we will take that suggestion to heart and see if there are ways to collaborate on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Otherwise, I'm really excited. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Councillor Ireland?
So I am concerned about the green space, not just for children, but for dogs. I don't know where they're going to do their business. Um, I think it's going to be a, a mess. Um, also the cost, a half a million dollars per unit when some of them are like 500 and some square feet is just a crazy amount to me that taxpayers are helping fund this. And I don't like the concept overall when I have had low-income housing, people that I know live in them, if they get a job, they're kicked out of their low-income housing. So there's no incentive to work when they get into these places because as soon as they get a job and make more money, then the rent's too high and they can't afford to live there anymore. So we've got to find a way to incentivize working and I don't think this does, so I will be voting against it.
Great. All this ad, I just wanted to show this image. The image on the right is the sensory garden. This is the northern part of the building. So again, reflecting some of the population, some of the amenities, the services we want to provide. So this is incorporated. So it may be some of the imagery is not showing all of that open space. Um, and then to that, for affordable housing, we are remarkably proud of this opportunity to provide this level of AMI in the city of Westminster.
And I just want to say, Chris, um, with Makers, um, I often say, if I could blindfold a person that's in place, put them on some sort of transportation, get them to a Makers' building, get them inside the Makers' building, but they don't know where they're at, um, I guarantee you, they would never guess they're in, uh, the 30 to 70% AMI. They just wouldn't. Um, they're beautiful. You do a great job. You, um, really go for just not space and, and the things that any person would love in their kitchen and in their space to be able to put things. You have put so much thought into it. So, um, anytime I get that blah, blah, blah about, um, AMI and whatnot, I just want to take that person, blindfold them right there and get them to a place and have them sitting inside and then just say, well, what do you think of this apartment? And, um, they would leave with a different tune. So thank you for doing what you do. Um, at this point, I am going to open public testimony. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Just wanted to say thank you for bringing this. Marcus, we've talked about this. This is fantastic. Um, the, you know, we talk a lot about cost of living in the city and how we can reduce costs and how we can alleviate the pressure that a lot of working families are going through right now. This is one way of doing that, right? So thank you for what you're doing.
Do we have anyone signed up?
We do. Um, we have John Palmer signed up to speak.
Thank you again. Again, this is kind of fun. Lots of things concerning this property. I'm with councillor Ireland. $500,000 per unit? We could buy them all houses for that. It's ridiculous. A new home, $500,000. But they want to spend that on a single apartment? Crazy. Uh, I never heard anything talk, anything mentioned about a bike rack or storage of any kind for people with bikes. Never heard anything about EV charging stations. I know we're from one extreme to the other, but I didn't hear anything about either of those. Didn't hear anything about 88 parking. And as far as the park, Uplands only gave $5 million for all of the parks, not just that park. So how far do you think that's going to go with the other parks on parcel A and parcel B? $5 million's not going very far, especially since we're spending $10 million at downtown. Another thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is you're putting these low-income people at a disadvantage. You're putting them a half a block away from a pot shop. There, there's three more on top of that up, up Federal. Liquor stores. We all know that people on low incomes generally, and I might be wrapping it in a nutshell here, but most of them have some kind of substance abuse problem, be it liquor or alcohol or marijuana. I think you're just opening the door for disadvantaged people already. And here's a biggie, food desert. Show me where these people are going to get food, especially if they're low-income and don't have cars. There's not a really a bus transit system on Lowell or on Federal other than the one that runs, what, every 45 minutes to an hour? Again, food desert, where are these people supposed to get food? Now, here's a biggie. Did some research over the past couple of days and I believe we've got four people sitting up here that should recuse themselves from the vote here. In 2021, it seems that councillor Demont and councillor Namela took large contributions from Metro Housing Coalition. In '23, it seems that councillor Carmella and councillor Hott took large contributions from, again, Metro Housing Coalition. That's a conflict of interest because Norse Design and some of these other people pay into that. So you essentially took money for this, from this fullness development, which is a conflict of interest. And I'm bringing that forward under the advice of legal counsel. Yes, Dave? Under the advice of legal counsel. So contrary to what Dave Franco's going to tell you, oh, it's okay, you can vote objectively. No, you can't. It's a conflict of interest. So the four of you need to recuse yourselves.
Thank you. That was the last speaker. I will close the public hearing. Any further questions? Councillor Demont?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I would like our legal counsel to address this because it's not the first time this has been brought up and it's been put to bed before, but let's go ahead and have that conversation again.
Uh, thank you councillor. So as councillors aware, the charter requires, uh, council members who receive campaign contributions in excess of $100 to recuse themselves when an applicant is before them who's made such a donation. So if any of you have received campaign contributions from this applicant in excess of $100, I'd ask, recommend you disclose that.
Um, in terms of a group like Metro Housing Coalition, which is what was mentioned, it's a collaboration of many different developers, uh, what is your opinion of, of that?
So not knowing the constituents of the Metro Housing Coalition, if, for example, the Metro Housing Coalition was made up of Maker Housing and, um, the Uplands, that could be a problem. But if it's a coalition of hundreds or more different interests, I'd need to understand that. So I suppose the question would be whether you've had donations in excess of $100 from, well, that are related to here, our applicants tonight.
Well, as, as far as I know, that's a, a coalition of many, many different developers. Um, I think the majority of them probably in the metro area. And if every council person, whoever took money from the Metro Housing Coalition had to recuse themselves from a vote on a development, he probably wouldn't get to vote on any developments in the metro area. So, um, it's my opinion of it, so.
This is time for our discussion. Who did I see? Councillor Carmelia.
Thank you so much. Uh, I just want to say, so that anyone is aware, if that comes up again, um, I have not accepted donations to my campaign. Uh, when a campaign happens, if other parties donate on your behalf without your knowledge, that is not part of your campaign. And so that is my statement around that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, I did receive a donation from, I'm forgetting the exact name, the Metro Housing Coalition, um, but I did not view it as having a distinctive, um, applicant or developer being a part of it. Um, it's a coalition of a lot of different developers and contributors and people within the industry. And so that does not in any way, um, affect the way that I think about a specific development. So I just want to make that clear. The, um, I also just thought I would, um, uh, just address the statement regarding, um, low-income households and those who live in them. Uh, they do not, uh, you know, typically comprise of some, but it does not mean just because you're low-income that you are addicted to some type of substance. That may occur, just like in every family that I have ever known. Um, so I just want to make it clear that low-income households are, um, in no ways, um, you know, tied to addiction more than any other type of household.
Oh goodness. Councillor Ireland?
I just want you to know that I did not take any money from any developers and if they gave me some money, they, I would be returning it. And that's my principle. And that's how I view integrity. So just to let you know, don't ever give me money in developers because I won't take it.
Councillor Hott?
Um, yes. So, um, all of the donations that I accepted, um, those were posted before Election Day. So everyone had the opportunity to see where I got money from before they elected me and still chose to elect me. I did not make any promises. Um, what happens is, uh, you are invited to a lot of different interviews. You answer the questions honestly and then they decide if they want to support your campaign or not. You don't make any promises. I just explained how I view housing. Um, didn't know if it was the right answer or not, um, just expressed how I felt about housing. But again, um, everybody had the opportunity to see, um, who I took money from before the election.
Councillor Demont?
Um, so I want to get back to the development at hand. Um, for, for me, I appreciate the fact that, uh, we continue to see diverse housing because that was what was promised in the Uplands. And so, so far, that's what we've continued to see. So part of that was affordable units. Um, I have visited some of the product from this particular partner that is in the city and it, like the mayor stated, it's very fine product and, uh, it's something that the folks who had lived there can feel, um, pride. I certainly, uh, have known both loved ones and just people I know in the community that, uh, for one reason or another are in that low-income demographic and those people deserve to be treated, uh, equally to the rest of us. And that's, could happen to any single one of us. I know some of the developments, uh, in the past, there were folks that came here who benefited from affordable housing and it's for everything from sickness to loss of job to, you know, loss of family members. So, um, I want to echo what the Mayor Pro Tem stated. Um, I think it's disappointing when folks, uh, typecast people who might live in these units. So, um, I also want to say that I think, uh, as far as how you're incorporating the landscaping looks really nice to me. So I appreciate, again, the product and I look forward to approving this tonight.
Councillor Azadi?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to, uh, echo the words of Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, low-income people, and this is for anyone who's listening, anyone who has been, who is low-income, who knows, who has family that's low-income, um, you're, you're not different, you're not any different than high-income people. I've been low-income. I'm not in a conception. They're actually the hardest working people that we have in the city. Eight percent of Westminster is low-income. I don't want anyone to feel that they are different just because they don't make as much money as someone else. Like councillor Demont said, it could be you tomorrow. Anything can happen. And then you become low-income. Why does that make you different? I think that does a disservice to all the hard-working, low and fixed-income folks that we have in the city, tens of thousands of us in the city. So if you're listening, this council believes in you and we are building a city that gives you the opportunity to survive, to level the playing field, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Councillor Hott?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, uh, piggyback on what some of the other councillors have said. Um, I too have been low-income and, um, I was worried about putting diapers on my babies. Uh, there's no extra income for, um, alcohol and other things, um, when you are just trying to survive day-to-day. So, um, that is completely false. Thank you.
I am closing the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Oh, sorry. Councillor Demont?
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing three, block one, track B, PA dash C, one dash A. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in section 11 dash five dash 15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass item C six. Roll call, please.
Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councillor Normella?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Ireland?
No.
Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
And councillor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to item D. I will open the public hearing. Do we have staff presentation? Oh, sorry, we need a break. Sorry. Um, we left off at item D and I opened the public hearing and asked if staff had a presentation. And before we start this, do we need to, or right after this one, change the agenda?
Thank you, mayor. Um, just noting that it is almost 11:00 PM and that our agenda has many items ahead. Uh, yes, if council wants to, just for those present, um, give some direction as to at least the final item on the agenda tonight, which is an executive session regarding the Greenway Trail. I believe we have staff here that are waiting for that one. Uh, so if city council would direct, uh, on that, we can certainly take that direction and if it's your desire to reschedule that item, we can.
Is, um, council okay with next Monday, 6:30, um, doing executive session on the Greenway Park?
My only problem is we tend to go over and, well, I guess it's a special study session now, so we're good to keep going. That's right. Okay, we're fine. Thank you.
Yes, I'm good with that.
I am fine. I'm good.
I'm fine.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, so yes, staff will be prepared to present that exec session at 6:30 PM Monday during your study session.
Thank you. Okay. I've opened the public hearing. Staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and city councillors, John McConnell, planning manager, again, to present this public hearing to you tonight. And just as a reminder, this one agenda item, item 10D does-
Raise up your microphone just a tad.
Thank you. This one agenda item, item 10D, does have three public hearings and I'll start with the first one and that is Uplands A1. The staff agenda memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, it's associated attachments to tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the record. The notices of the public hearings for all three of tonight's parcel A public hearings were mailed to a total of 3,134 property owners and tenants within a thousand feet of all the parcels. Six public notification signs were posted on the subject properties and the city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. The project site is located southwest of the intersection of Irving Street and West 88th Avenue and it's identified by the yellow star on the map. The site plan is from sheet 11 of the block one ODP. All of the units are alley-loaded, a publicly accessible private- A publicly accessible private park is located at the center of the project. Several of the units will front onto the city's future park, which is located just to the west on Outlet A. And again, Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains the 17 criteria that are being considered when reviewing ODPs. Staff finds that the ODP generally meets these criteria as outlined in more detail in the agenda memo. Staff recommends that City Council hold a public hearing and approve the Block 1 ODP subject to the additional conditions located in the summary of staff recommendations in the staff's agenda memo. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval with these conditions by a vote of seven to zero. Staff finds the approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities, access to opportunity, and economic vitality. And these are meant by facilitating new residential development and providing new publicly accessible park spaces. So this includes, this concludes the staff's presentation. The applicant's ready to present to you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening again, Marcus Pockner, on behalf of the applicant, presenting here tonight on A1. This was a piece of information that a counselor requested. We thought it was actually fascinating information about the neighborhoods that have gone through the process, to see the PDP and MODP, the number of units, and then the difference that we're seeing in the site specifics. I would just draw your attention here to A1, a much less planned density here, really because of the public roadways and domain and the way we attach to the park, the PLD, to the west of us. But interesting information about how that is developing. This is a presentation on A1. As you think of A1, it's right along that civic access of the schools and the park, an 11-acre park to the immediate west of us. And then the balance of A1 is this neighborhood just over eight acres. We are, it's great to have a residential partner that we're introducing to all of you. I believe you met him in the concept review. But I'd like to introduce Peter Launer with Brookfield Residential, the Colorado president, to give a little background on Brookfield.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Counselors. Thank you very much for having me speak tonight. Brookfield will be involved in two sites, A1 and A5, and we're very excited to be part of the Uplands community and the City of Westminster. Brookfield is a real estate investment and development company, and I'm Peter Launer, President of Land and Housing, overseeing the Colorado operations. We have built a number of communities throughout Colorado. The closest one would be Midtown, in, close, about three miles away from the site here. We're, we're looking forward to moving forward with the three different product types on these two sites, and want to thank staff for all the help that they've done in getting the project to where we are today. And with that, I'll turn it back to Marcus and available to answer any other questions regarding Brookfield.
Thanks, Peter. Here's a list of some of those other residential neighborhoods that Brookfield has developed or does develop across the metro area. As a summary here, we'd like to show this slide, the concept review recap that was presented to City Council. This were some of the key discussion points, items that we all discussed, details to be finalized, really understand that PLD and the parking. And then we actually went through the exceptions we had then. We were able to not have quite as many exceptions and able to solve some ideas that we heard from council on the 50% on the landscaping. We are showing here, if you go to the next column there, just looking at A1, we show that underlying PDP again, in full compliance, a very substantial reduction in density on this lot that allows us to have that more privately accessible public parks. And you see, we are right on, on the setbacks and the two required building forms. This is the neighborhood plan. We'll go back and forth just to keep Kaylee on her toes. She's going to walk through the neighborhood plan and the exceptions.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Counselors, Kaylee Norris. The main access into the A1 neighborhood is provided off of Irving to the east and off of West 87th Avenue to the south. The dark gray color shows the proposed local roads, while the alleys are shown in the lighter gray. The A1 neighborhood consists of three new-to-Uplands homes, home types all of which are alley-loaded, fronting public streets and parks. We are providing 27 single-family detached two-story homes in the light cream color along the northern edge to integrate into the existing fabric of the Shaw Heights neighborhood just to the north. 12 single-family detached three-story homes in the darker yellow color, those are generally located internal to the neighborhood, and 39 single-family attached three-story homes in the darker brown color, largely fronting the internal street network. Some of these townhomes include a roof deck, and those homes are denoted with the star here, the black star here on the screen. We're providing two publicly accessible parks. Those are shown with the blue star. And the overall Uplands community is committed to pedestrian connectivity, both internal and connecting to the greater community. As you can see here, the pink dash lines are accessible pedestrian connection routes, and non-ADA accessible connections are shown in the blue color. Two flashing beacons are located along West 88th Avenue and the other along Lowell and 86th Avenue, as shown in the dark blue icon, to help pedestrians cross 88th and Lowell. As a neighborhood, as neighborhoods are approved, like A2 to the south, you can see how different neighborhoods start to connect with each other. The centrally located park, as shown in the vicinity map in the lower left-hand corner with the star, this is, the park is designed as a cozy gathering area with amenities including formal play features, shaded gathering areas, pollinator demonstration gardens, and varied seating options, and a sidewalk network that wraps the park and connects to the overall walk network. Here's another view of the park taken from the northern edge, looking south, celebrating the large open lawn.
We're going to go back and forth here. We do, again, provide our whole team to answer any questions. I'll cover the architectural details. You see here, these are all three new architectural styles. All of the homes are alley-loaded and feature two-car garages. This is the two-story, single-family product. These are the three-story, single-family detached homes with the option for a three-car garage with homes, again, ranging from 1,600 square feet to roughly 2,000 square feet. And lastly, I just want to show the single-family attached townhome styles with floor plans from 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. I do want to point out the modern brownstone on the lower right is shown in the, or shown in the lower right provides the option for a rooftop deck.
Next, we'll wrap up the presentation by walking through a few exceptions. All exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District, which encourages innovative development with the intention of providing diversification and flexibility in housing types, prices, and overall design. The exceptions collectively allow us to provide additional housing diversity within the city that is pedestrian-friendly and uses water thoughtfully and meets the overall intent of the overall Uplands PDP and MODP. Our first exception is in regard to the parking, which is further supported by the 2021 Westminster Transportation Mobility Plan and the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Westminster Municipal Code. We're going to skip a few slides. We'll talk through those in a later presentation. The exception addresses how parking is provided, which is consistent with the previously approved Uplands neighborhoods and supported by the approved vision previously stated. We meet City Code's parking requirements in total, just in a different way. The orange-colored squares in the homes denote our two-car minimum garage spaces across all three home types. The blue spaces denote our head-and-guest parking spaces, and in purple along our internal streets are our parallel parking spaces, which help with traffic calming. All of these spaces collectively meet the overall parking requirement total. Additional spaces in excess of the requirement are shown in teal along West 88th Avenue, Lowell Boulevard, and West 87th, and Julian Court, adjacent to the PLD. And finally, homebuyers have an option of a three-car garage on two of the single-family floor plans if they desire additional parking. The image on the screen shows the successful neighborhoods within the Denver metro that have alley-loaded homes with two-car garages and provide ample on-street parking spaces for guests and residents. Our next exceptions are consistent with recently approved Uplands neighborhoods. They include a reduction in the overall landscape area for single-family attached townhomes, a reduced roof pitch for minor roofs on all homes, and a reduction in lot size and private outdoor space for individual lots. These exceptions allow us to promote housing diversity, create pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, maintain perimeter setbacks, and use of water thoughtfully while providing outdoor living area through a combination of porches, decks, and yards. We're happy to walk through these details if you have any questions, but these are generally consistent with the previously approved neighborhoods. There are a couple of new exceptions with this neighborhood. This includes an additional five foot of building height, as Marcus mentioned, for the modern brownstone style of the single-family attached townhomes. This allows for roof decks and is limited to just this home type. Additionally, we're asking for an exception to the masonry's coverage on the townhomes. We meet the 50% masonry requirement on the front elevations across all three different townhome elevations. Masonry is provided on the side elevations, ranging from 19% to 57%, depending on the townhome architectural style, and providing 11% to 25% on the rears. To provide additional architectural features, these rear elevations have been designed to include overhangs, which provide additional architectural interest and help de-acentuate the garages. We are also providing additional long-lasting, high-quality materials such as cementaceous siding in lieu of brick for architectural diversity and visual interest. And lastly, we're requesting a reduction in unit count within the A1 neighborhood as compared to the approved master ODP. This reduction allows us to find the right balance between unit count and the number of exceptions needed while creating a quality neighborhood.
Great, thanks, Kaylee. The last floor slides here. I just want to show, as we always do, the water conservation, always mindful of that. That is consistent, and looking at those reduction of uses and units as we look at that. So we're right on track as we have planned, actually, a number of acre-feet under planning. We believe, as staff notated and we provided separate narrative, we are in full compliance with all the underlying approval criteria, and again, with the underlying PDP, with the exceptions that we have noted. We have our whole team here, and we're happy to answer any questions or comments that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, I will open the public testimony. Do we have anybody in line?
I have a question.
Pardon?
I didn't, you didn't see my light. So the park that's in there, is the HOA going to be responsible for that park, or is that a city park?
The internal park? Is that the question? That, the HOA would be responsible. That's a publicly accessible private park, so we would be responsible for that.
Okay. So that's my concern, because the HOA is responsible, the alleys, snow removal, the detention pond off-site, fences, what else? Walls. I mean, there is a lot of things that HOA is responsible for. That's my concern with the project.
Public testimony. The first speaker is Elizabeth Lynn Horse. The next speaker is Brad Wilkins.
Just for questions.
Oh, okay. Okay, then the next speaker is John Palmer.
I was thinking, maybe Marcus or Chad would like a drink of this organic water that comes off of your property. Chad, you ready?
John, you're here to talk to the council.
Oh, yeah. Handouts. Handouts for everybody. And again, please put them in the packet or in the map. In the presentation? And I'll wait on those.
You'll see Title 11 here. You see things that are highlighted in there. Look at the letter I received from, from the city manager's office. The signage was not installed in the proper location and the proper amount of time as required by this Title 11. It's supposed to be there 10 days in advance, wasn't there. Wasn't properly placed until the third. The third to the ninth, the way I count it, is not 10 days. Therefore, this hearing should be void, null, and rescheduled to a time at which it can comply. And further down on Section 5, if the planning manager, the applicant shall provide the planning manager certification that the signs were properly posted and maintained constantly during the required notification. Where's that certification? And if they say they were there the whole time, they're lying to you. So again, this hearing needs, or this particular hearing needs to be tabled to such time that they can come in compliance, because they are not in compliance. If you do so choose to vote on it, there's still questions from the Planning Commission regarding parking. Commissioner Collings had lots of questions about that. You can find that in Page 176 of the agenda this evening. And that pertains to parking, shortage of parking. And again, under the advice of legal counsel, due to the fact that you all took money from the Metro Housing Coalition, to the tune of Claire, you took 3,000; Amber, you took 3,000; Sarah, you took 1,000. I don't have a number for you, Dave, because I overlooked that. But the point is, you did take money. It is a conflict of interest. Again, under the advice of the attorney, that's being said publicly so that it's on the record. So with that, again, the four of you need to reclusive yourselves, because you took money. It's right here in your campaign finance report, more than $100. That's what the attorney just told you. It is a campaign finance. It's on the paper. You can't deny it, you can't dismiss it. It happened, you took it. Conflict of interest. And if the attorney would like to see those, I'd be more than happy to provide those campaign finance reports to him so that he can verify that. So, but most importantly, the hearing shouldn't go on because they were not in compliance as required by Title 11 of our City Code. So unless we're just going to start skipping City Code, again, this needs to be tabled until a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last- John Beaker. Do not harass our citizen.
If you was telling us in the meeting it was organic, if it's organic, you should not feel bad about drinking.
That was the last speaker. Thank you. City Attorney, somebody, advice?
Just one question, actually. I understand the signs were posted by the applicant on Friday, August 30. If the applicant could just address the concern that was raised, that would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you. I'm happy to address it. The signs were posted in accordance on the date that was required. The surveyor looked at Irving and actually put them on the wrong side of Irving. I will note that A5 was also posted, so A5, A1, all across that. So as soon as we were notified by staff that same day, we moved the side, the sign over to the other side of Irving. We think there was certainly proper notice and the signage on the site to know that both the hearings would be taking place.
Thank you. That is helpful. It does seem if the planning manager is- It does seem if the planning manager is available, I would just ask him whether that represents compliance, substantial compliance or otherwise.
What he stated is consistent with our observations. The code does not require that the public hearing not take place if the signs were in fact not properly posted. So it would be up to the city council to decide if it would like to, you know, modify the hearing if it felt like the proper notification wasn't presented.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Just a question, so is it correct to say the signs were posted on August 30th but on the wrong side of the street?
That's correct. What the applicant stated is consistent with what my understanding of the situation was.
And did the signs describe the project?
The signs identify the date of the public hearing, the time of the public hearing and the venue. And for reference, the provision that I was referencing just a moment ago, 11-513 Public Hearings for Land Development Approvals, Provision A8 states that at the public hearing the planning manager shall verify the required notices were issued, including the mailed notices and the posted notices. Any person with actual notice of the public hearing shall have no standing to object to the commencement or conduct of the public hearing, even if such person failed to receive one or more of the forms and notes prescribed above. Hearing shall proceed despite claims of lack of notice or insufficient forms of notice.
Thank you. Mr. McConnell, do you have a recommendation as to tonight's hearing proceeding or being rescheduled?
I recommend that the hearing was adequately noticed. There were lots of signs out there. The number of signs were correct. One sign was not posted exactly in the right space, but I think the hearing was adequately noticed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. So that I would suggest resolves the first issue. I think that the council can proceed with the tonight's hearing in light of the signage that was posted on the site and across the street from the site. So with regard to the second question of campaign donations, as councils aware, Section 5.12.1 of the Westminster City Charter identifies conflicts based on prior pecuniary benefits and the acceptance or receipt by any counselor of anything of value in excess of $100 from any organization shall create a conflict of interest with regard to that counselor's vote on any issue or matter coming before the council involving a benefit to the contributing organization unless such interests are merely incidental to an issue or question involving the common public good. So I asked the clerk, she's looked up the Metro Housing Coalition, and it's our understanding that there are some 300 donors that fund the Metro Housing Coalition. And if the Metro Housing Coalition's goal is to have housing, I think that if council is comfortable proceeding, arguably those interests are incidental to an issue or question involving the common public good. It is not that you received large donations from the applicant who's here in the room before you tonight and that your vote is somehow conflicted with regard to their application tonight. So if council is comfortable proceeding, I'm comfortable proceeding. And I would note that under 512.1, council does have the final say on whether there is a conflict, and council's determination is deemed to be final and conclusive. So if city council is comfortable proceeding, I think you certainly can tonight.
Thank you. So is council okay with the signage, number one? And number two, with 300 people giving to a coalition and dividing that into whatever anybody got, is everybody okay that that was a coalition, not individual givers?
Yes.
Yes to both.
Yes to both, and I will add just for the record, since it was brought up, I got $1,000 from the Metro Housing Coalition. And I see it and always understood it the way it was explained because it's a vast group of developers, like I mentioned earlier this evening.
I'm okay with both.
I am okay with both, and I also, again, I emphasize it was not taken with the intent of giving any precedence to, or any, I can't think of words right now, it's late, to give any preference to any specific developer. And as Counselor Hott said, in terms of the process, they do just ask you questions and determine whether or not you feel like you are somebody that you would want to, or that they want to provide dollars to, so.
Counselor Hott?
Yes, on both.
Counselor Ireland?
So I'm in trouble, I'm in trouble with this, since I didn't take any of the money and the ones that voted on it did take money, so it's kind of a conflict for me, but also the signage, was it supposed to have an address of where the development was supposed to be? If it was on the wrong place, did it have an address?
I just should have offered earlier, as you all know, Irving doesn't exist today. It's a dirt road. So in the survey, it was just on the wrong side of a dirt road, and so we moved it to the other side. So that is generally an address that is assigned to it based on a survey. So we thought we were accurate, we moved it a few feet over after we were notified.
Okay, I feel like they were trying to comply. I've seen that before in water recall, so we were trying to comply theirs too. So I'm fine with that. I've been overridden by my city council members, so that took money. So I guess if Mr. Palmer wants to take it up with his lawyer, I guess he can because I don't know the law. Anyway.
I will close the public hearing, but do you have any other questions on this issue? Or do we have a motion? Oh, Counselor Demott?
I'll go with a motion since I don't see any questions from anybody. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing 1 Block 1 PA-A1, subject to the conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations herein. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Protim?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item D6. Is there anything further? Going, going, gone. Roll call. Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Romella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Oh.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to Item D7, and I will open the public hearing. Do we have a staff presentation? Welcome one more time.
John McConnell, Planning Manager, again, here to provide you with this presentation. And this is for parcel, or Uplands filing 1 Block 5, Planning Area 5. Staff Agenda Memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The Agenda Memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The project site is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of West 88th Avenue and Federal Boulevard identified here on the aerial photograph with the yellow star. The site plan shown here is from Sheet 11 of the Block 5 ODP. All the units are alley-loaded. A publicly accessible private park is located near the center of the project, and another is located on the southwest corner of the project. And along Federal Boulevard, you'll notice a significant landscape buffer that is provided. And as always, Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code provides the 17 criteria that the council may consider when analyzing this ODP for approval. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and approve the Uplands filing 1 Block 5 ODP, subject to the additional conditions located in the summary of the staff recommendation as more detailed in the staff Agenda Memo. Planning Commission voted in favor of recommendation of approval with the condition by vote of 6 to 1. Staff finds the approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priorities regarding access to opportunity and economic vitality, which are met by facilitating new residential development and providing new publicly accessible park spaces. That concludes the staff's introductory presentation. The applicant is here to provide you with his presentation.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much. Marcus Parkner here on Areas A5. Just to go through again, just showing the reduction of units here, we're proposing six below the original PDP and MODP. The site here just to the east of Irving, Irving to Federal, 88th to 87th, again, completing kind of the 88th corridor. Brookfield is also the partner on this site, you have heard from them, and you'll also note that the architecture is the same. So we'll work through those slides, the same product and the same architecture. These, again, communities that Brookfield is developing on. We had, in a lot of ways, the same discussion points, really talking about building heights, the decks, and the materials in concept review. I think the other thing we want to be sure and go through as we do is, again, 172 units were planned on this site, we're a little less than that. It allows for some additional public park land, private park land there, and our perimeter setback. We really are honoring those. I would just acknowledge and reinforce to everyone, this is that very substantial setback on Federal 50 and then 65 feet, really to show that the opportunity we believe we all have with a future BRT, and also to really absorb the impact of Federal Boulevard. Kaylee, I'll work through the neighborhood plan and then we'll come back on the exceptions.
Welcome.
Good evening. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. As you previously saw in the A1 presentation, the A5 neighborhood consists of a similar look and feel. This includes 64 single-family detached two-story homes in the light cream color, and 29 single-family detached three-story homes in the darker yellow. Those are generally located internal to the neighborhood, and 73 single-family attached three-story townhomes in the darker brown with the loud roof deck option shown with the black star. This neighborhood also features two publicly accessible private parks, shown with the blue stars. As previously shown in the A1 presentation, you can see how A5 begins to connect to the overall Uplands community and how we are committed to pedestrian connectivity, both internal and to the greater community. Here's one of the parks which is centrally located, as shown in the vicinity map in the lower left. This park space features an active play lawn, shaded gathering areas, playground, grilling stations, pollinator demonstration garden, and varied seating options. This neighborhood is our first to front along Federal Boulevard. This image shows the view looking south from the northeast corner of the A5 neighborhood, and the landscape design follows the concept from the MODP, which provides buffering from Federal while allowing perforated views out. This neighborhood reflects the same home types and styles that we had just discussed in the A1 presentation, the two-story detached homes, the three-story detached, and then our attached townhomes. Next, we'll wrap up the presentation by walking through a few exceptions. As mentioned earlier, within the A1 presentation, all exceptions are supported by the intent of the PUD Zone District, which encourages innovative development with the intention of providing diversification and flexibility in housing types, prices, and overall design. These exceptions collectively allow us to provide additional housing diversity within the city that is pedestrian-friendly and uses water thoughtfully. Beginning with parking, this is our first Uplands neighborhood that requires an overall parking reduction. In response to the condition Planning Commission included and our recommendation for approval, we wanted to provide a little additional background on why this reduction is justified and appropriate here. As you all know, city has the existing plans that support this reduction, including the 2021 Westminster Transportation and Mobility Plan, the 2040 CUP Plan, and the Westminster Municipal Code. The Transportation and Mobility Plan includes information on key existing conditions within the city. First, the average Westminster household has 1.8 cars, which confirms that not all housing types need three to four parking spaces. And second, the impact that both parking and the housing have in affordability, the average Westminster household spends 46% of their income on housing and transportation, which showcases the importance of right-sized parking for different home types and providing alternative transportation options, such as sidewalks, bike lanes, and bus rapid transit. Uplands benefits from its adjacency to the future Federal Boulevard BRT route. This is one of the busiest transit corridors in the metro area and will provide connections from 120th Avenue down to Anklewood. Including access to four light rail stations, Uplands supports and enhances this corridor through its robust bike and pedestrian network along the perimeter and within the community. The 2040 CUP Plan also indicates the need to address the changing demographics and support diverse housing opportunities to serve a range of household sizes, composition, and needs, all of which supports our exception to right-sized parking based on the diversity of housing. And finally, the reduction is supported by the Westminster Municipal Code on how it looks at off-street parking. This exception still meets the interest of the public by balancing parking demand with the need for multiple modes of travel, by utilizing parking efficiencies through a mixed-use development in proximity to transit, avoiding creating excess parking by promoting safe and convenient bicycle use. And finally, the city had the foresight to anticipate the potential for parking reductions in neo-traditional developments exactly like this. The A5 neighborhood requests a reduction in the overall parking total, which is supported by the means we had just discussed. The orange denotes the two-car minimum garage spaces across all three home types. The blue denotes our head-and-guest parking spaces, and the purple represents our on-street parallel spaces internal to the neighborhood. The teal on the western edge along 88th Avenue is in addition to the parking that is provided, and home buyers will have the option of a three-car garage on two of the single-family floor plans if they desire additional parking. Allowing this reduction allows for home-type diversity and encourages future BRT ridership. Our exceptions within the A5 neighborhood are consistent with the recently approved Uplands neighborhood and what was just presented in A1. We're happy to walk through these details if you have any questions, but those generally are consistent with the previous neighborhoods.
Let's close here on our final few slides. Thank you, Kaylee. Again, consistent on water conservation and water usage on this site, again, fully compliant with the underlying requirements of PDP approval criteria, again, also showing the same density as required and the setbacks, really, again, emphasizing the setbacks along Federal. We are here to go through any questions, and if we're going through any exceptions or anything too fast, please let us know. We're happy to put any of that information up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Ireland?
Well, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here about having mass transit in the area. The train station is not that close, and we don't have the bus coverage yet. So I feel like we're building something and hoping that we get transit, so I'm not for lowering the amount of parking spaces at all. And also, the HOAs are going to have to take care of parks and alleys and, I don't know if the detention pond's part of this, I don't recall, but there's just a lot for an HOA to cover. And I've seen in other parts of our city that it's becoming a problem, so. of our city that it's becoming a problem, so I will be voting no.
Do we have any public hearing?
Yes. First, I want to check that Brad Wilken does not want to... Okay. The only speaker we have signed up is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Again, thank you. In hearing these comments, I would have to agree with Counselor Ireland on putting the cart before the horse in regards to BART and all of this other nonsense about the train that goes to nowhere once every hour. It doesn't make sense. When this was in front of the Planning Commission, if you look at page 176, you can see where Commissioner Collins was concerned about them being 257 parking spaces short on this block. Contrary to what they're saying, I have to believe what the Planning Commission came up with here, contrary to what this gobbledygook that they've been giving you. Now, let's go back to the conflict of interest again, and it is a conflict of interest again with the money you took, the money you took, the money you took, and the money you took. And to clear it up, some of the people that are part of the Metro Housing Coalition, Norris Designs, hmm, where have I heard that name before? Boulder Creek Neighborhoods, part of this group. Dream Finder Homes, part of this group. Fiorian Sons, the contractor over there moving dirt on the property. Or Reed Capital, which is part of this group. You took money from these people. You should reclusive yourself. And again, this is all under the advice of legal counsel. You know, you guys think I'm bluffing, I'm not. Counsel is listening tonight. This is all in the public records, so reclusive yourself and do yourself a favor, because it is a conflict of interest. As Mr. Franklin told you, you took more than $100. Conflict of interest, it doesn't matter how many people are part of Metro Housing Coalition. I just gave you five names of people associated with this project. I could probably go back and look up more, but that was just a quick glimpse this afternoon. So, as I say, starting off with Norris Design now, this, none of this should have been voted on by any of you from the word go, but yet you keep pushing the envelope. As I said, it's under the advice of counsel that this is all being brought forward, so thank you.
Thank you. That was the only public speaker. Any questions at this point? I will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion? Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing one, Block Five, PA- A5, subject to the condition set forth in the summary of staff recommendations herein. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Item D12. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mayor McNally? Yes. Mayor Protem Nammala?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Ozati?
Yes.
And Counselor Ha?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote. That brings us to the next public hearing. I will open it, and do we have staff presentation? Welcome.
Thank you again. John McConnell, planning manager, again, to provide the staff's presentation on this item. A staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo is associated attachments to tonight's PowerPoint presentation. The public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The project site is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of West 84th Avenue and Federal Boulevard, identified here with the yellow star. The site plan shown here is from Sheet 11 of the Block Seven ODP. Again, all the units are alley-loaded and publicly accessible private park is located in the center of the project. Along Federal, you can see the landscape buffer continuing southward as it did on the previous ODP. Section 11-515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains seventeen criteria that would be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the ODP generally meets these criteria as outlined in more detail in the agenda memo. Staff recommends that city council hold a public hearing and approve the Block Seven ODP, subject to the additional conditions located in the summary of staff recommendations in the staff agenda memo. Planning Commission voted in favor of recommendation for approval with conditions by a six-to-one vote. Staff finds the approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priorities, access to opportunity, and economic vitality, which are met by facilitating new residential development and providing new publicly accessible park spaces. That concludes the staff's introductory presentation, and the applicant is here to provide you with his presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I thought I might get a chance to say good morning, but I think it's still good evening.
It is. Twenty more, or eighteen, eighteen minutes?
Eighteen minutes, excellent. We'll do it. So A7 here to go through again, just showing proposed as 191 units, we're about 11 units under that count. A7 is really a remarkable view, a city view, kind of the southeast corner of Parcel A, looking at this site and looking back towards Denver. This shows the concept review, some of the issues that we talked about. Again, we're really focused in a lot of the same conditions that were along the Federal Boulevard corridor and the parking issues related to that. I think one thing we just want to stress again is just the overall compliance, staying in, this is actually a little bit right in the middle of the dwelling units per acre, and again, at 4%, 4.1% provided for publicly accessible public parks, and we are completely in compliance on the perimeter setbacks and actually providing an additional building for. I'll walk through the neighborhood plan here to give Kaylee a little break. It shows the neighborhood east of Irving from 84th to 85th. Importantly, to note the different typology, we have the 82 single-family detached story, two-story homes in the light cream color. Besides those, of those 30 single-family detached three-story, you see kind of the varied heights that we're trying to provide on this site, and then the 68 single-family attached two-story townhomes. I would show the circulation plan again as you move from this site, looking to A4, looking at the connectivity that we're providing all the way over to the Lowell Corridor, and then the A3 neighborhood again, really starting to show the full neighborhood of Parcel A. This gives a great example, again, that continuation of the muse and the landscaping along the Federal Boulevard corridor. We absolutely believe in that BRT and that it is coming there and to provide adequate parking and the right landscaping and buffer for that corridor. This shows you a publicly accessible private park, the amenities that are in this site. This is an active hub. It actually includes a turf lawn that's sized for volleyball, bocce courts, and a shade structure that is attached as well, a large shade structure there in the middle of the site. We also have kind of built-in seating throughout this area, so really a true gathering place right in the heart of the A7 neighborhood. Just as an example, I just want to show the varied typology and architecture that we're showing. This is proposed, looking north, kind of at the West 85th Avenue, to really show the streets and the homes that are on this. Kaylee will go through the architecture, but I do want to say that we're providing actually the smallest home that we have designed in this neighborhood. It's a 1,300 square foot of village home, as we call it, and you start to see this life of the street, again, really trying to look at different price points, different sizes, and different types of neighbors and households that will live on this site.
Thank you. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. This neighborhood includes all-new architecture and floor plants. First, we have the two-story homes, which range from the 1,300 square feet, as Marcus mentioned, our smallest home type yet within Uplands, to 1,500 square feet. These homes allow for an optional one-car or two-car garage to provide additional housing diversity. The three-story homes enhance the streetscape by providing additional massing options with bigger front setbacks. These homes range from 1,683 square feet to roughly 1,785 square feet. And lastly, we have our two-story townhomes with units that range from 1,450 to 1,650. The exceptions with this, within this neighborhood are similar to those that we have discussed through this evening. Our first exception is related to parking for the A7 neighborhood. We're requesting a reduction in the overall quantity of parking, similar to what was just requested on A5. We'll be providing a combination of garage spaces. The two-car garages are shown in orange, and the one-car garages are limited to 28 homes. Those are shown with the red square. And then the blue denotes our head-and spaces. In response to Planning Commission recommendation of approval with conditions, we've added three head-and guest spaces in the northwest portion of this neighborhood, and the purple represents our internal on-street parking spaces. And then in teal along West 84th Avenue represents 19 additional parking spaces not counted in the overall parking totals. The parking reduction is further supported by the Westminster Municipal Code and Transportation Mobility Plan and the 2040 Comp Plan, as previously discussed in the A5 neighborhood. We're committed to providing housing diversity throughout all of the neighborhoods, and within this neighborhood, this shows up as an option of one of our smallest homes to date, which is a two-bedroom, one-car garage home at approximately 1,300 square feet. We're proposing a parking count that considers the home's square footage and how they live and provide this much-needed housing diversity. The balance of the exceptions are consistent with the recently approved Uplands neighborhoods. They include a reduction in the overall landscape area for the single-family attached townhomes, a reduced roof pitch for minor roofs on all homes, and a reduction in lot size, private outdoor space for individual lots. These exceptions allow us to promote housing diversity, create pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, maintain perimeter setbacks, and water used throughout. We're happy to walk through these details if you have any questions, but these are generally consistent with the previous neighborhoods.
Great. Our last few slides here, just to finish up, this actually shows four acre-feet reduction in this neighborhood, a very efficient neighborhood, again, really starting to see the efficiency below even the 100 acre-feet that we promised, in full compliance with the underlying PDP and the MODP. And I should note, on behalf of our entire team, this was a very long night of presentations, and staff did an incredible job. There was a thousand pages of material they had vetted, reviewed. We've hosted three rounds of community meetings. We think these are really beneficial neighborhoods, and we would respectfully request your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have public testimony? Our speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Thank you. Might be easier if I just stand up here for the rest of the night, I don't know. Let's talk about the A7. Again, Commissioner Collins on page 176 is questioning the 229 parking spots that are short. I don't know what to say. I mean, something's changed here between the Planning Commission or what Tracy, excuse me, Commissioner Collins came up with. I don't know, it doesn't make sense. Not once in any of these parcels have they bothered to even talk about a price point on any of these homes, on the A lot, or, excuse me, on the number one lot, on the number five lot, on the number seven lot. Kind of interesting that they don't want to disclose that. Currently, there's a major problem up on the, on the A7 property. There's a state violation in process with them having standing water now for an excess of 72 hours. It's not a detention pond. They're holding water up there that is illegal. State law says 72 hours on stormwater being held on a property. It's been weeks now, up off of Irving Street and 84th, where they're retaining water. Why is that? Can't be in compliance if you're not following state regulations. And again, I'm going to say it, said it already a couple of times, under the advice of legal counsel, I am requesting that the four of you, Amber Ha, Seren Nammala, Dave Demat, and Claire, that you reclusive yourself due to your conflict of interest with taking campaign contributions from the Metro Housing Coalition, of which, again, Norris Design, Boulder Creek Neighborhood, which is part of this group. In fact, they're the ones that paid the $17,000 fine last week. Dream Finders, excuse me, maybe that's who paid the fine. It was Dream Finders paid the $17,000 fine for their violations, their stormwater violations. Boulder Creek, Fiorian Sons, the dirt-moving people that are over there currently, and again, O'Ree Capital. Conflicts of interest. You need to reclusive yourself. Please, just make it easy, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing. Any further questions from anybody? Counselor Ireland?
I just want to repeat what I said about the others. I'm concerned about the HOAs in this area, but they're already paying a Metro Tax District property taxes, and now HOA B's on top of that. Also, the parking is a real concern. We're assuming these people have no friends, I guess, so they won't be able to visit them unless they take a bus or a train, so that's a problem for me, and I will be voting no.
Counselor Nammala? I mean, Mayor Protem?
Just had a question for staff regarding the parking. Obviously, staff is recommending moving forward with this parking ratio. I'm just trying to, would like to hear from staff regarding just the perspective on the appropriateness.
Yes, staff believes that the request is reasonable. This is not a typical front-loaded suburban residential neighborhood. This is a neo-traditional neighborhood. The code does allow you to consider such reductions, even significant reductions in parking. Where in a traditional neighborhood, like many of us live in, we have front-loaded garages, driveways that break up the street cross-section and prohibit a lot of on-street parking. And so this neighborhood is designed so that the streets can accommodate the full cross-section of on-street parking. And so it does really strike a balance between having one and two-car, and sometimes three-car garages, plus what would normally be accommodated in a driveway can be accommodated on the street where the driveway isn't.
Would you say that the Bradburn Village development is similar in terms of parking provision?
I believe it's similar, but I don't know numbers for numbers. Standing here before you.
No, I, yeah, I'm just trying to think of local examples that have worked reasonably well. I used to live in Bradburn, and in a townhome that only had two parking spaces and just on-street, so I think that's a good example for us to be thinking about and knowing that that is working pretty well, so, all right, thank you.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I was going to ask about parking, but Mayor Protem covered that, so thank you. So I will just address publicly, as I did privately, that I apologize, Mr. Palmer, you are correct, that I did receive from Metro Coalition. I had to jog my memory there, so I just want to say you're right. I also want to say that it's an organization that broadly supports the needs of housing for our community, and I am someone who is here to work towards meeting those needs of housing in our community, which we have statistics behind that is much needed. So I just want to put that out there, and that my sentiment still stands in the statement that I have never received anything that directly affects any of the presenters this evening. evening, and that is true. So I just want to also thank you, though, Mr. Palmer, for keeping us in line. I think that we need that everywhere. I think all electeds need it, and I really like that you do that. You keep us honest, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
I think I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the official development plan of Uplands Finally One, Block Seven, PA- A7, subject to the conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations herein. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item D18. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
Sorry it went so late, but thanks for showing up. New business. Is there a motion for Counselors Bill Number 28? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 28 on first reading authorizing acting city manager to execute a development agreement with Community Reach Center, Inc., in substantially the same form as attached for the development of a proposed behavioral health facility and authorizing the acting city manager to finalize and execute a development assistance agreement and stipulated use tax agreement without requiring further approval from City Council.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 28. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
I will be voting no on this. I think that the mental health on my community services, I believe they're called, should have paid market value price for their land that they're building this on. Their net worth is 47 million; their assets and their CEOs make almost a half a million. I think they could afford to pay that to our city instead of the taxpayers subsidizing them, even if they're doing goodwill. It's not fair to the taxpayers.
See no one else. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Resolution 23. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 23 authorizing the acting city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Community Reach Center, Inc., in substantially the same form as attached for the sale and development of a portion of city-owned property.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 23. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
No.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 29. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 29 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of $1,780,000 to the 2024 budget of General Capital Improvement Fund, 92nd and Eaton Street, improvements account contingent upon Westminster Economic Development Authority's approval to allocate funds.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 29. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 29. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the acting city manager contingent upon approval of Counselor Bill Number 29 on second reading toward the, and to execute a construction contract for West 92nd Avenue and Eaton Street project with KRM Concrete LLC in the amount of $946,166 plus a contingency in the amount of $142,000 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $1,088,166.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, a second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 29. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to item B3. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the acting city manager contingent upon the approval of Counselor Bill Number 29 on second reading to execute a contract amendment for on-call construction management services with Anzer Advisory Management LLC for West 92nd Avenue and Eaton Street project, increasing the $250,000 contract by $189,560 to $439,560 plus a contingency of $10,000 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $449,560.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item B3. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
Yes. I am just curious, since this is an amendment, what the change was for a nearly 200K difference.
I'll ask our Director of Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Paul Knippel, if he has a downside question.
At least you didn't stay for it to midnight for nothing.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me check my notes here. I believe that the additional money is for additional construction management services relating to inspections for the pavement and the hiking bike trail that are going in and the landscaping, so.
Okay. I mean, I accept your answer. I guess I'm just curious, like, what changed, but if we don't know, then I understand these are necessary. I just thought that might be.
I can help, Counselor. So the existing contract was considered for other work around the city, and it was concluded that adding this work to that contract was the most cost-effective and best value way to get this work done. So it's taking another existing contract for the same work but for a different area and adding this to that.
Understood. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. See no one else. Roll call, please. Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors Bill Number 30. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 30 on first reading to prohibit, withdraw, or use groundwater in the area where residual groundwater contamination exists from the former Shaw Heights Dry Cleaners Site located at 3681 West 88th Avenue, Westminster, Colorado.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill Number 30. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
It sounds like this is referring to the same land that was mentioned earlier in the evening. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we could provide more information on this one if you, if you wish regarding how this fits into some of those concerns. Mr. Knippel is going to join us here. This is related to a state approval that's needed in order for this, the state to move forward, and I'll ask Mr. Knippel to provide more detail on that.
So this was referenced earlier.
We need the microphone up by your mouth.
Thank you. The, the area that's showing the exhibit that's attached to this agenda item here displays the extent of the groundwater contamination. So there's been sufficient testing going in the area to define where that groundwater contamination is, and some of the concerns brought up earlier with respect to the, to the Uplands development, the contamination does not reach, reach that area. It does show up on the, the public land dedication from Uplands at the southeast corner of 88th and Lowell, but it's just, it's just slightly above the limits, so it's included in this.
Thank you. Who is it that's doing the testing? Is that us or a third party?
No, it was a consultant that works for the owner or the prospective owner of the dry cleaning site itself, and to, there was a phase-one environmental assessment done on the project, and the contamination was found, so that prospective owner needed to go through these steps with the state to get its clearance to be able to develop property.
That makes sense. Thank you.
The flume was defined.
Okay, and so we will have access, even though this is owned by the property owner, we'll have access to the results, results when they're ready?
We have them.
We have them?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume that'll come with everything else that we'll get, so thank you so much. That's helpful.
Counselor Ireland?
Maybe he wants to stay up there. My concern is the Adams County side that's not part of Westminster where the school is. Was that tested? Are these, are there groundwater problems where the school is?
It was, there was testing done along the south side of 88th, just north of the school site, and so there was, there was no, no problems found there. So the, the boundary of the area shown on the exhibit in the agenda item represents the limits of the contamination that need to be addressed or, or have the restrictions placed on it. So there was testing done on the northern boundary of the school along 88th, and it not migrated in sufficient amount to be able to trigger any further action.
So do you think it migrated anywhere else other than where it was tested?
It, it's possible, but, but not likely. I mean, this is not an uncommon sort of approach by the state to, to evaluate contaminated soils and ground, so there's a, there's a sufficient level of confidence that's developed by the number of test holes that are drilled around the perimeter of the site to make the determination that, of the extent of the contamination, so. I couldn't guarantee that it's not underneath there, but the, the boundaries have been defined according to practices.
Okay. I would have liked to see testing a little broader, but I guess that didn't happen, so that's probably why I'm not voting for it.
See no one else. Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
I'm sorry. You get a vote first. Oh, I vote for?
Yeah.
I didn't know what you said.
No, sorry. Mayor McNally.
They're sort of garbled tonight. Yes.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Hott?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six-one vote.
That brings us to item C2. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move contingent upon approval of Counselor Bill Number 30 on second reading authorizing the acting city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment whereby the city of Westminster agrees to not approve requests to use groundwater from within contamination area.
Counsel, or Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item C2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Nammella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote.
It is 12:09, and we're adjourned.